Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your patience for the folks in the gallery. We're having a couple of technical issues. I think after all these years of Zoom, we would get it all right instantly. Uh, welcome to the town of Midlands, uh, regular council meeting. Wednesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-three. It is now six thirteen P M. We just came out of a closed council session that began at four o'clock and, um. Surprisingly, we couldn't get through all the agenda items. We're going to go back to it later after this meeting, but we didn't want to delay and keep you fine folks out in the lobby any longer than we had to. So thank you for being here. Uh, call this meeting order and, uh, ask if there's any declarations of conflict of interest from council tonight in relation to the agenda item, the open sessions items. Seeing none. I'd just like to welcome everybody and offer a traditional land acknowledgement. The town of Midland recognizes it's located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Nishnabik people now known as the Chippewa Tri Council comprised of both slave First Nation, Arama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within pre Confederation Treaty five and Treaty sixteen and included within the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. Town of Midland recognizes is located on land, which is his traditional territory of the Huron Wendat and historic homelands to the Matee and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. And I'd like to deliver the following safety message for our folks in the gallery. Should the fire alarm activate, please exit the room in an orderly fashion and proceed to the evacuation assembly area, which is located in the upper parking lot. You may exit through the main entrance doors that you came in tonight. Make an immediate left and proceed out the front doors or through the secondary exit point. Right here. And up through the stairs. Uh, check the door for heat before opening, and if it's safe, exit onto the second floor, turn right, head out to the parking lot from the door. It'll be in front of you. The washrooms are located on the second floor to the left of the seating area and an elevator is located just outside the main entrance should you need it. As Midland has a respectful workplace policy, anyone that exhibits violent or harassing behavior will be asked to leave. And for as for the recording of this meeting, council meetings are recorded on Zoom and are posted the town's YouTube website. The meetings are also broadcast on Rogers TV Midland Channel fifty-three when possible. So I just have a motion arising from our closed meeting discussions. We only got through one of our four items tonight. So this is a motion moved by councillor E seconded by councillor Ball that the council receive as information and confirm the directions as outlined in the verbal report. An update provided by Acting Director of Planning, Building and Bylaw at the closed meeting session of council held September sixth, twenty twenty-three. With respects to the Ontario Land Tribunal Official Plan Appeal for eight, five, six, six, highway ninety-three and eight, five, six, seven, highway ninety-three, also known as Brookley Golf and Country Club. We've had our discussion in camera and council. We're just looking for all those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. And I should add, we are missing one councillor this evening. Councillor Downer was unable to be present at our in camera or at this open session. Next, I have a count, um, motion moved by councillor Meredith, seconded by councillor Bald that items and related recommendations contained within the September sixth, twenty twenty-three consent agenda. As consent items having been considered by council be adopted before I call the question. This is oh, and there is a I'm missing something. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, there's a motion for the approval of the agenda before the consent agenda items.
So there is, and I probably have it mixed up. Oh, yep, I did. I had it too, too deep. So I'll park the one that I just read onto the floor and let's, let's move this one by councillor McDonald seconded by Deputy Mayor Cotton. The contents of the regular council meeting with closed session agenda for September sixth, twenty twenty-three be approved as amended. And that's the removal of item twenty-two point one motions for which notice was given that council approved the pride crosswalks at the intersection of King Street and Elizabeth Street, provided they are fully funded by an external organization, not by taxpayers and not by the town of Midland. And just for clarity, that's just being pulled because there's going to be more information coming before council and it was premature to deal with this agenda this evening. So councillor Ball who moved it has asked that it be removed from this evening's agenda. We look forward to discussing it a future agenda. Are there any questions, uh, from council about the agenda items? This is no, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Now back to my other agenda moved by councillor Meredith, seconded by councillor Ball that the items and related recommendations contained within September sixth, twenty twenty-three consent agenda and as consent items having been considered by council be adopted before I call the question on this, it's an opportunity for council to speak to any of the matters and there are several in our consent agenda of if there's any comments or questions before we move on. Are there any councillor McDonald?
Thank you, your worship. It's in regards, I have a few comments, but one question of clarification on the first correspond or correspondence, ten point one point one regarding the parking, um, waiver, parking fees, request from the B I A. The letter has two options and I wondered which one we're approving in the consent agenda. Um, it says that, um, for the October twenty-eighth from eleven to three that there be no parking fee and then for the month of December. And they say, should this proposal not be found favorable to council, they're proposing an alternate. So what, which one are we approving waiving it or the alternate of them subsidizing?
Okay, I can answer that. It's actually built into the agenda. Um, so what it says is the council received the request from Katerina Mezovic, Operations Matter, manager of the B I A dated August twenty fifth, twenty-three for support of subsidized downtown parking, AKA free parking for one fall event for the mini monster mash, which is a hoot. I did it last year. Uh, scheduled for Saturday, October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three from eleven to three, as well as the free parking for the month of December, as seen in previous years, and the council approved the request for the subsidized free parking on Saturday, October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three from eleven to three for the mini monster mash. And the council approves the free parking for the month of December, twenty twenty-three. So we are effectively approving their entire ask. Uh, by default, because this hasn't been pulled, but that's part of, is part of the consent agenda. So everything they're asking for, they're getting.
Thank you for that clarification. I should have read it more clearly. I guess the subsidized downtown parking, free parking in brackets says it all. I apologize for seeking the call. And the other comment I have is, uh, in regards to the next four reports. Um, obviously our new fire chief has been very busy getting us updated on our bylaws and I appreciate that. Um, there's I, I appreciate it and trust your guidance and will accept it all.
Great. And just to further on that, you'll, for those that follow along, read these things. This is all being approved kind of in one blanket motion. Uh, we haven't opted to pull any of these out to debate them or to take issue with the report or the recommendations. And I expect come budget time, we will see, uh, you know, budgetary things that are attached to these, this new bylaw, um, with, with regards to adequacy and response time. So this one doesn't have a financial impact yet, but it's setting the framework to make sure we're meeting those response times and adequately staffed. And as for the B I A request, again, the parking, you know, it's one of those things. I'll just remind everybody, we committed to not touching for one calendar year after we launched it. Just to let the dust settle and actually get some good metrics on usage and, uh, monitor any issues people are having with it. We are fast approaching that one year time. So expect, uh, I know indirectly we're touching parking tonight by approving this for the B A because we love our B A, but um, expect a report likely at our next council meeting that's going to start, um, detailing the success of our parking program and some of the gaps and challenges and you know, how much money it's made us and what it's costing us, all that goodness is to come. So when it comes to parking, uh, stay tuned, everybody. Councillor Ball.
Actually, I just have a question about the positions outlined in this report for the fire, uh, fire chief, deputy fire chief, uh, fire prevention officer, training officer, career captains, career firefighters, volunteer firefighters. Can you just specify and clarify that those are already there and that they're integrated positions or are you looking specifically to have that as a singular role? The training officer, career captains, fire prevention officer.
Through you, your worship. Uh, thank you, uh, councillor for the question. The, uh, the positions are already all in place. The update to the policy is really just to, to specify, um, more information as to what everyone does, but there's no new positions that are not currently in.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor? Oh, sorry. I thought I saw your hand. That was my peripheral vision. Anyone else have any questions? Uh, councillor McDonald, do you have another one?
Yes. And if it's in the report and I missed it, I'm going to start reading everything three times. It's in regards to the, um, ten point four point five, uh, regarding the liquid encroachment agreement. When was the dock built? Does anyone know? Has it always been there? Something new?
Mr. Campbell, like to take a stab at that one?
But I'm not sure of the exact date it, it was built. I'd have to ask the staff who did the, the researching into it, but it, it has been in the last few years. So it is a recent build.
So would you term it as a case of asking for forgiveness instead of permission?
Uh, through you, I, I, I don't think that's the case. I, I think there was some ambiguity where the property line was and a legal survey was completed as part of this research and confirmed exactly where the property line was, which gave rise to the need for the encroachment agreement.
But ask a question of clarification on procedure. Um, because of this agenda item or any agenda item isn't pulled and then we second guess ourselves. We'd have to vote against the entire consent agenda to oppose accepting one particular item. I'm just asking for clarification on procedure.
Technically, yes. Unless you had a conflict on us, was a guy, and then we can rip it out separately for voting, but there's no conflict in this case. So the opportunity is, the onus is on us from the week we have to review these things to identify before the meeting that we want to pull something out and take issue with it.
Thank you.
However, in speaking to that matter, this was like more of a comment for staff. I wanted to commend staff for creating this sort of um, this hybrid creative agreement that protects the rights of, of this town asset property, uh, so that if it is ever sold in the future, we've already debated this one earlier this term. If it is ever sold, uh, this has been baked into the agreement that that encroachment agreement would have to be renegotiated, becomes null and void effectively. And whoever bought the land can decide whether they choose to honor that or want the person to remove whatever's encroaching. So I thought that was a, a creative solution that we're not binding um, both ourselves and potentially a future owner uh, at some point to this agreement that we're agreeing to tonight. So just kudos for, for thinking about that to staff because it would have been easy just to skip that part and just deal with the encroachment. So good thinking. Any other questions or councillor Merrittis?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Gordon, um, on, uh, ten point four, four fire dispatch agreement, um, the the term costs for a, a new term, five-year term, um, I believe it's, my calculations are just under three hundred and fifty thousand. Is that, uh, are those the numbers that I'm getting, uh, for those term costs roughly about seventy thousand a year for this agreement? And if so, um, plus additional fees in schedule A, uh, if any, uh, transpired during, during the term, um, knowing that this was coming up and, uh, to term as of the end of twenty twenty-three, did we, did we research any other, um, alternatives for, uh, savings or if, if those are the actual numbers?
Through you, your worship, uh, to the councillor, the, uh, the agreement is said, it's a universal agreement. It's sent to all the municipalities that, that work with Berry Dispatch. The numbers are set by dispatch. Um, have we researched other alternatives? No, we have not. Uh, we've been with Berry Dispatch for a while now. We're very happy with the service provided. They're certified. They're upgrading to next generation nine-one-one. That's why when you look at the numbers, the increase is a little bit higher, but it's spread over years versus, um, one lump sum. Um, if we were to look at other alternatives, there are places such as, uh, really, I believe, and some more in the north. Um, but that would separate us from what all our neighboring municipalities are using. Um, so we went back with the service that we've, uh, used for years and have great services.
And just to follow up, just, just for out of, um, pure, um, you know, comparison, have you, um, and although we're happy with Barry and you're happy with Barry and their, and their service, but, uh, through comparison, have we ever compared, uh, the costs with, uh, really a dispatch and, and Barry and see what the difference is and and if there's a substantial difference or is, I'm not sure how the process worked. Do you, can you negotiate with the, um, you know, Barry through various numbers if they're quite considerably lower, um, just.
Again, through you, your worship to the councillor, the, uh, the negotiation, the, the number or the percentage that they charge each municipality is per capita. They have a certain percentage and depending on what the growth is, um, that's what they use as a number. Um, if we have significant growth, so if we doubled in population in the summer months, there's an additional fee to that. Um, so that's how they come about with their numbers. It's a four-year, it's a five-year contract. Um, I wasn't here prior to the negotiation of the last one, um, and this one came forward and we've been with them forever. So no, I did not, uh, look at alternatives because this is who we've used for years and we're very happy. Thank you.
Councillor Ball.
I just wanted to ask a question about the H vac systems. As, uh, I see that we've had funds allocated for the twenty twenty-four budget. I'm just wondering if we have allocated all of this budget ask already, or if this is an additional asset that's coming to us.
Through you, your worship to the councillor, um, in twenty twenty-four, we had, uh, budgeted or we had a request per budget to replace the H vac system. Unfortunately, the H vac system failed before we got to twenty twenty-four. So we have to replace one of the two. Our asks now is to replace them both at the same time. Um, and the funds came well below what we thought we would need in twenty twenty-four. Uh, equipment used like a crane and so on, so forth availability. That's why we're bringing both at the same time.
Hey, thank you. I just want to make sure we're not getting a giant ask next year.
Councillor Merrittis?
Yeah, just following up with the, the H vac, um, I, I, I read in the report that there was actually forty thousand dollars, uh, allocated for, for the two H vacs and, um, we're actually only spending, but, uh, just a little over twenty thousand, well, under twenty thousand plus H S T. Uh, so that is a, that is a big variation of, of your estimate or whoever's, um, whether it's your estimate or whoever, whoever had the estimate, it's, it, there's, there's a, there's a big difference there. So I'm not sure wow, why it's such a big, um, big gap in that estimation.
Again, through you, your worship to the councillor, the long-term capital budgeting was done, um, by the former chief with, with management. It was a guestimate looking at numbers as we were moving forward. Um, when the, the initial unit failed, we started looking at options available to us. They all came in below the forty thousand. Um, and we, we went with the company or, or we're recommending one that, uh, has things available right now. So I believe it was a guestimate done at the time, how they came up with the number. Unfortunately, I don't have that history.
Madam CFO, have you got something to add?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, just to add to that, uh, just on the long-term plan, those budgets aren't, uh, yet approved, right? Those are, those are good estimates, um, that we refine every year as we get sort of closer to the, those dates. Um, and so yes, forty thousand versus twenty, twenty-five thousand, it's a little high, but it's, it's, it's not. It's not out of the ballpark.
Yeah. So you recognize where I'm going with this because when it comes to, to budgets and as long as we're not guestimating and we're, you know, and, and budgets are coming up pretty pretty soon. So, uh, that's where I'm kind of wondering where this forty thousand comes from. And if we're just doing guestimates when it comes to, um, you know, so we need some, uh, closer figures, I guess, instead of such a big gap. That's my concern with, you know, these numbers. Thank you.
And as long as we're talking about fire, I think our long-term, uh, capital plan is that we're going to need to be replaced that building in ten years or something like that. So what we're doing right now is we're not putting in the gold-plated stuff. We want to keep this thing through its longevity and then we expect a replacement and growth. Cause to your point, our community needs to grow and, uh, with the building and housing that's in the pipeline, it will. So some of these ancillary costs like fire dispatch and policing and things that are more per capita based are going to increase over time. But hopefully offset that with the, the tax base and our new residents. I, I had one thing to pull out, but go ahead, councillor.
Just one more question. Can you just explain to, to us about the, the fire dispatch, just so that the, the public can, can understand what we're actually paying for with, with Barry, the services? Thank you.
Through you, your worship to the councillor's question, uh, uh, thank you for the question. So, uh, nine-one-one receives a call for emergency. Um, it's dispatched either police, fire or paramedics. When it comes to Berry Dispatch, they dispatch fire for twenty-one municipalities in the area. They dispatch the call to our firefighters. They respond. They do radio communications and update, uh, the documentation as the fire or the incident occurs, hitting all the benchmarks. And at the end of the call, it's sent to the, to the fire department and they finish their, um, initial report or their, uh, incident report, which goes to the fire marshal's office. So they answer the nine-one-one calls. They take on all the information. They provide updates to the fire crews responding. They, they call for assistance. So if we need hydro, paramedics, other assistants, other mutual aid departments for them to come in. So they coordinate the communication side of the fire emergency. Thank you.
I just wanted to, uh, because we didn't pull it out, but it's such a novel idea. I wanted to make sure that, that, that Madam Clerk had an opportunity to talk about it. And that's this new, uh, amalgamation of our accessibility committee that we've been unable to staff and it's a mandatory committee. Um, and actually somebody already, you know, commented to the ombudsman that, hey, Midland's still without their committee. And quite frankly, it's because we couldn't get enough applicants to form for him. So the clerk's department took it upon themselves to find an alternative to get something going. And I was just wondering, Madam Clerk, if you could, I know it's all written here, but just for the benefit of folks watching along, what is this novel, uh, creation you've come up with and how does it impact the seniors committee that we previously envisioned amalgamating, uh, with accessibility?
Thank you, your worship. Um, as you mentioned, the town has been experiencing difficulty in having people apply to committees for, we're really struggling to get volunteers for committees. And as we've been advertising for this committee since January, we've only received two applications. And in advance of, um, this new term, the province had decided to combine the seniors and accessibility, which we did because we thought it would reduce the numbers from twenty-five members to we would only need seven to nine. Again, we still didn't have, um, many applications. And because we weren't in compliance and we also were contacted by the ombudsman about a month ago that someone had inquired why we don't have an accessibility committee. Um, we reached out to the county and asked if we could, um, join their joint accessibility committee, which other municipalities have, have done in the past. And they were more than happy to take us on so that we would be in compliance, which is great. And what they require is this, uh, motion from council approving that we join with this county of Simcoe so that we would be in compliance with the A O D A. And we'll send this resolution to the county. They have to, um, send it to their, um, county council. And as long as it gets approved, then we will advertise and we will have one Midlands resident um, that can sit on that committee as well. And our deputy clerk, Sarah Cathcart, will attend the meetings. And hopefully, um, we'll have, we'll be successful with that. And as we're joining with the county, we will now have a standalone seniors committee. So we're going to re-advertise for seniors. And again, we've only had two applications. In the last term, you know, the seniors committee only met, they had six meetings scheduled, and I believe they only had two because there was a lack of attendance. So I'm not sure um, what will happen, but we will re-advertise for the seniors committee and hopefully we'll have some, some more applicants for, for that committee.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions about that? Because it's a pretty neat idea. Councillor McDonald.
I'm in support of the, uh, the suggestion. But did I read in their bylaws that there would also have to be a councillor sitting on that committee? I thought I read that, but maybe I misinterpreted that. I'll take a look.
Your worship to councillor McDonald, it's not mandatory. So what we're doing is we're just going to join in with the county, have a Midland resident and then, um, they're going to discuss about having a, a Midland rep or I know through the county and the mayor and deputy mayor can, um, respond to this as well. I believe that they're appointed to certain committees that to support the county, and I'm not sure who the county rep is on that committee, but we will, um, we're going to try and see if we can get a Midland councillor on that committee, but we're just taking step one and just having them accept us as part of their committee. We'll advertise that there's a Midland resident that can apply and go from there.
Thank you.
All right. Well, there we go. That's a little more discussion than usually have, but there was a lot of big stuff we put in the consent agenda. So if there's no further discussion, then I'll call the question to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Next, I have a motion moved by councillor Pro seconded by councillor McDonald. The council resolve in a committee, the whole. All those in favor? It's carried. Deputy Mayor? It's all you.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening to council, staff and guests in the audience and those watching virtually on whatever, uh, station you're on. So, uh, this evening we have, uh, a number of items. Uh, have I, I do have a lighted agenda. There's this evening, but we'll go through it. I'd like to begin by, uh, with item number twelve is, uh, there is no public meetings this evening or hearings. On number thirteen, there are no presentations also. So but we do have number fourteen, we do have the integrity commissioner recommendation report. Uh, we have the, uh, the principles integrity, uh, twenty twenty-three annual report and the principles that and integrity acts as our, um, integrity commissioner for through the town of Midland. And we have, I believe, virtually, um, one of the, uh, I guess, uh, members from the principles integrity. Mrs. Janice Atwood Petkovsky. And we also have, uh, Mr. Jeff Abrams, who will be, I believe, be presenting this evening. Uh, so we're going to be listening to, uh, Mr. Abrams, um, provide the re, report, uh, on from the, uh, principles integrity. So Mr. Abrams, you, uh, if you're, uh, able now to present, that'd be perfect. So you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor and good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Good evening, staff. Uh, this is a, a good news story yet again. It's an annual report speaking to our activities over the course of the year, uh, for period, May thirty-first to June, June first spans the election. Uh, I'll, I'll speak very briefly about, uh, what we are, who we are for members of the public who may be watching. Uh, highlight the activity we've done on your behalf and then a little bit of, uh, uh, of information from our experience across the board. Principles Integrity serves for over fifty municipalities across Ontario. Uh, the firm is just Janice and myself. Janice sends her regrets this evening. Um, you've got, you've got me. So the, the report is before you. It's just, there's a chart on the second page and I think it it, it, it well depicts what the role of an integrity commissioner is, what the purpose, I should say, I, what the role, uh, the purpose of an integrity commissioner. We have this consulting role. We have, uh, an educational role. As you've heard me say, the advisory function is the most important of a, of an, a function of an integrity commissioner. Uh, and yes, we are the complaint department. We're the complaint department for assertions that you've fallen short of your ethical standards under the code of conduct and also under the municipal conflict of interest act. And we're also available, the council and, uh, other duties as assigned sort of portfolio, but all of that is not there in a vacuum. All of that is designed, we think, to increase the level of trust and respect and engagement you obtain from members of, of the Midland community. Um, a little bit disappointing. I heard a few moments ago that you're not getting, uh, applicants to sit on a committee. Um, I'm not suggesting for a moment that ethical concerns are the reasons why you're not getting that because the numbers would show otherwise in any event, but the whole purpose, working with us, working with you is to increase that level of trust and engagement and respect, uh, that, uh, that council has in the community. As you know, we operate under a cloak of confidentiality. It's why our, our annual reports are a little bit sparse. We can't tell you exactly what advice requests we've received, what, what the advice was, even who requested it. What I can say to you is that we have had four advice requests over the period covered by the report. Not a, not a bad number. It's a, it's a, it's good to know that there is a level of engagement and members are reaching out from time to time. We also worked with you and supported your, your orientation. November twenty eighth, we appeared before you and provided education and training. And lastly, with respect to complaints, investigations and resolution. During the period covered by the report, there were four complaints, all of which were, for various reasons, resolved, disposed of, without the need for a public report. So that too is, is a good sign to the extent there is any allegation or misunderstanding or friction, whatever, to the, to the extent that a council and its members can resolve those things without the need for a formal report and investigation is, is an excellent sign. So that's our, our history here in Midland over the last year. Let me just take a broader view, look at ethical themes around the province from our perspective as integrity commissioner for over fifty municipalities and also being in the loop and talking to other integrity commissioners. One of the most concerning things still, it may well have been ever thus, is leaks, members who do not abide by their obligation to keep confidences, whether it's from closed session or for other reasons. And I'm, I'm repeating myself, but it is of such importance that members abide by their responsibility to avoid breaching the obligation to, of confidentiality, that if there is a complaint and we find that a member has knowingly breached that obligation, and we issue fair warning that there will be a severe sanction. We will recommend a severe sanction because it, it does tend to undermine the ability of a municipality to properly function when members of council are, come to be known as in quotations, leakers. That's not the case here, certainly in the period covered by the report, we don't see any of that. Also, a general theme across the province, again, may well be something that, that's been around for since there have been municipalities, is the responsibility to avoid disparagement, disrespect, harassment. Mr. Deputy Mayor, is there an audio problem?
Yeah, sorry, you're, you're kind of faint in our overhead speakers. I don't know if, uh, we're just going to see if we can crank you up a little bit here.
Yeah, I was getting feedback at my end, so we'll work on this one.
I, I think we got the stats you provided earlier, yet there was four requests for advice. And then there were four complaints logged with you, none of which, I mean, I guess they were all resolved informally and nothing came to either last council or this council. Maybe those are important stats. Maybe you could just review that so everybody could hear what you were saying.
Yes, there were four, four pieces of advice that were requested, which is a good sign. It's important to have engagement and for members to reach out when they need to reach out. And there were four incidences of complaints. All of them were resolved without a need for a formal investigation. And that too is a good sign, to the extent complaints come, the ability to resolve matters informally to achieve course correction when course correction is, is needed is a healthy sign, is a good governance sign. And so we're happy to see that there was no need to commence formal investigations on any of those complaints. You're hearing me better? Okay. So I did speak as well, and it's worth repeating, the responsibility for members of council to maintain confidences. It is, um, it really undermines the proper functioning of a municipality when a member of council is known to be a leaker. And i- it constrains what you will say to each other in closed session. It'll constrain what staff might be prepared to say. It's unhealthy. And so regrettably, it's still, it's still something that we see across the board in our fifty clients. We know that other integrity commissioners are seeing it. And so we give fair warning and the fair warning is if there is a complaint about breach of confidentiality and we find after an investigation that there is a a knowing breach of the obligation, we'll be recommending a significant sanction. And this is not just, this is not something you just reserve for Midland. This is part of my core speech when I do annual report presentations. It's that important. And so it's just a reminder for, for council this evening. The, I think where we broke broke over the audio issues, Mr. Deputy Mayor, was on this topic of avoiding disparagement, disrespect and harassment. And, you know, it need not be something that amounts to classical harassment that is worthy of an investigation and commentary and course correction because even microaggressions left unchecked can really become toxic and create a toxic culture. And so you should savor situations where you work well with staff, that those kinds of interactions are minimized. And, you know, a more harmonious relationship amongst everyone is obviously a better scenario. There are still, of course, across the board here and there egregious acts of harassment that occur. And you, you may have heard, we spend a, put a, put a bit of ink on this in the, in the report. There was a private members bill, Bill Five, it arose out of the Ottawa situation. Bill Five was called Stopping Harassment Abuse by Local Leaders Act. And it sought to do two things. It sought to make mandatory the, the members of council had to abide by their municipality's harassment policy. Almost every code of conduct provides for that now. And if it didn't, it could be easily done by regulations, didn't need legislation to do that. And so really Bill Five, the purpose was to enable, after the conclusion of integrity commissioner's report, enable a council to direct the integrity commissioner to apply to court to seek the removal of an elected official. And I, and I don't really want to take your time. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. There are a number of reasons why we found Bill Five to have missed the mark. One of them is it just, it created expectations that this was a, a real remedy. But it takes a year, two years to get through court processes. And meanwhile, you're left with the same problem. The person who's complained of the issue is left without a remedy for that period of time. And the remedy itself was, would be uncertain. And so regrettably, it would have been better had the ministry's consultations, which was commenced last summer, continued. And we could have discussed in greater detail things that a council could do, making it clear, as we say in the report, that a council can impose a remedy, a sanction directly related to the kind of harassment that was occurring on the recommendation of their integrity commission. That could be done in three or four months, offering all of the procedural fairness that is required as opposed to a year and a half or two years. And so I know that many councils, and I, I must have been, I didn't check to see whether Midland had done this, had endorsed Bill Five because there was a bit of a lobbying effort to do it. I see nods, nodding. And at, at the end of the day, it's not been, it didn't get through second reading, so no harm done. But I think the emphasis, to the extent anyone has influence in these matters, encouraging the ministry to re-engage on the consultations would be a good thing because there are some gaps in the process and some clarifications that are needed. Another, another, I'll just finish my presentation, see if there are questions at the end, if that's okay. Another area of, I won't call it concern, but emphasis across the board is the obligation of members to recognize conflicts of interest, whether they be statutory under municipal conflict of interest act or a common law for matters that aren't caught by, by the the, the statute. And your code of conduct already recognizes the code of conduct of the common law and has a mechanism built right in it for members to recognize their common law responsibilities, to step away and even to make clear those close calls situations where you may look like you have a conflict, but you, you don't. And you can transparently say that why it is that you're, you're able to to continue. Mr. Deputy Mayor, I know you've had a long evening already, so that's the conclusion of my presentation. I'm quite happy to answer any, any questions that, that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams, for your presentation. It's good to hear the reminder of our roles and responsibility as council members, particularly when we're dealing with council affairs. And I'm going to open that for any questions by council or comments from Mr. Abrams. And I'm glad, I'm sure you'll respond to any of your questions. Do we have any questions from council? Yes, your worship.
Thanks. I just wanted to call out, it's a good work that principles integrity has done with the town of Midland. They were our first ever integrity commissioner when they became mandated. And we've had them now for successive terms. And, I mean, I speak from personal experience, I've relied on their, their council many times, I will say, over the last term, certainly sage advice and wisdom on lane keeping and other things, as well as just invite, advice that I use in day to day to make sure that something I'm doing doesn't put me in a jackpot. And I just wanted to encourage council, you know, anytime you're questioning yourself about, wow, I wonder if I could have a conflict in this? Or, you know, I wonder if this would be appropriate or, or what do I do when? Avail yourself of this. Effectively, we pay a retainer. It's a small fee in the grand scheme of things for principles integrity. And the expectation is you rely on the advice of the integrity commissioner. Don't wing it or don't, don't talk to somebody else, even appear and get their opinion on whether you're safe or not. These are the folks that are going to, you know, be the triers of that fact and will render judgment upon you. So it makes the best, uh, best advice I could ever give council, you know, speaking from personal experience is avail yourself of their services early on before you think you might step in something. And you need to be absolutely a hundred percent transparent and provide every bit of fact to them. Don't hold back anything because their advice is only as good as the information you share with them. So if you give them the rose colored version to try and elicit the advice that you want, you will not be bulletproof in the judgment day that could fall upon you when somebody makes a complaint or complaint or says that you've overstepped. So my experience with both partners, integrity commission, at the integrity commissioners office there with principles integrity has been really good, even though I've been at the receiving end last term of some discipline. They're all learning experiences and I, I have nothing but positive things to say about that organization. So I'm glad that we are continuing to keep you and have you. And I would encourage my peers to avail themselves of your advice. I think I've already, I think it did it once this term for some advice. And, and it comes back within, you know, thirty days unless you put some, you know, if it has some sense of urgency, they've been really good about getting back to things that are hot topic, maybe on the next agenda item. And for members of the public, hold us accountable. We have a code of conduct. We all agreed that we're going to abide by it when we took office. If you feel that we've overstepped or failed to live up to any of the expectations, and some of them are rather vague and ambiguous and very subjective, but nonetheless, they are what we agreed to abide by under code of conduct. If any member of the public feels that we've, you know, not lived up to that, then your right is to contact the integrity commissioner and make that complaint, make your case. And they will be in an investigation and the output will either be their rationale to you as to why they perhaps feel that it isn't an overstep or it may in fact end up being a full investigation. And some kind of report will come back to council, which should include anything from, you know, spanking effectively, verbally to monetary sanctions. So these are, and we experienced this last term, so if anyone's interested in this, just Google principles integrity in Midland and you, you can read all about it. And we're certainly not alone. Every council faces some of these dramas, some far worse than, than we've had. So just all in all, in summary, I just wanted to express my continued support in principles integrity, perhaps uniquely amongst my peers, having worked with you closer than I perhaps wanted to a couple of times. But you've been a, a great resource and continue to be for the community. And to reach you, is it still post office at principlesintegrity.org?
Org. Dot org.
Dot org. So post office at principlesintegrity.org, or you can Google them and find them online. They're the integrity commissioner for many municipalities, not all. There's a few out there that opt to go different ways. And a relationship with the integrity commissioner is, I mean, if you Google this stuff too, you'll find drama between councils and integrity commissioners. But the relationship that an organization has with their integrity commissioner is integral to its good working and to make sure that transparency and procedural fairness is available not only to elected officials under constant scrutiny on the pillar that we put ourselves on or that you put us on, quite frankly. And also to make sure that the public has an opportunity to call us out for any perceived missteps, whether, you know, in fact, for a reality. So just again, a vote of confidence, Mr. Abrams, thank you for presenting tonight.
I, I thank you for the generous comments, Mr. Mayor. I just correct one thing, and that is that our target for returning advice requests is not thirty days, but two days. We don't always hit the two days, but yeah, we, we strive to get it turned around as fast as that.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. Thank you, your worship, for your comments and good points to, to be aware of. I do have councillor McDonald for a question. Councillor McDonald?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Cotton, just in regards to the services availability, their contact information, is it on our website? General public, if they didn't?
I'm chuck, I'm chuckling because the clerk and I had an email conversation earlier today. And unfortunately, she had apparently other things to do. I don't know what that might have been as you were meeting in council. It's not as present on your website right now as we would like it. I don't know what occurred. I believe it was in the past, so some, some page has fallen off. And so we will work with the clerk to make sure that our contact information, the reference to the code of conduct is readily available and easily found on the website as well as our contact information. I don't want this to sound like an advertorial. It's not that we're looking to commence complaints. It's not the situation is at all. But we do find that we are able to solve little problems before they become big problems when people reach out to us and, and they get either an explanation or we're able to tap a member of council on the shoulder and get that course correction I referred to earlier. Complaints do sometimes result in investigations. That's unavoidable. But obviously, working collaboratively with you, we try to minimize that. It was a long answer to a short question.
Thank you. I do hope that through you, just to follow up, it just proved that I wasn't as inept as, because I couldn't find it. And I was just trying to be self-sufficient, not that I had a concern. I just wanted to be able to refer this manner to, when, when and if I was ever inquired. So I'll look forward to it on the website or perhaps it could be provided to the councillors individually until it's on our website. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any other questions from councillors? Seeing none, I'd like to thank Mr. Abrams for his presentation this evening. And I do have a motion. I do need a mover and a seconder. I'll, I'll read the motion. The motion is that council receive as information the two thousand twenty three updated report and presentation on integrity commissioner's services provided by Jeff Abrams of Principles Integrity. It is moved by councillor Post, seconded by councillor McDonald. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that's carried.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Good evening. We will now move on to our next item. Number fifteen, we have two deputations this evening. And the first one, fifteen point one is the twenty twenty three Terry Fox Day. I have Mr. Dawn Chapman to present to council this evening. If you can step up to the mic, Mr. Chapman. I've seen Mr. Chapman previously in the last couple of days being very busy promoting and making aware of the Terry Fox very busy promoting and making aware of the Terry Fox Day. And I'm sure he's been out to a lot of different functions. So welcome, uh, Mr. Chapman. Uh, I'll give you the floor. You have ten minutes to do your presentation. And this is to be received as information council in there. And I'll, we hear the presentation and if there's any questions, we'll ask Mr. Chapman. Thank you, Mr. Chapman. You have the microphone.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you, Your Honor and Deputy Mayor and Council and Staff and our visitors in the in the back row here that are struggling a little bit to hear. Um, I, I just want to spend a little bit of time telling you what's happening with the Terry Fox front right now. Uh, we're very active right now. We're not in kind of a planning phase. We're two weeks away from the biggest event we have all year uh, and nationally as well. Uh, so I'll speak a little bit about that. Take you through our results, looking back, and then our forecast, kind of looking forward. And it is nice to see a few of the counselors I've run into in various places where I'm running around selling T-shirts and doing silly things. But it's just great to see you're out there in the community encouraging the support of this cause. Uh, the theme this year at the national level is Dear Terry. Yep. For those of you who read newspapers or online or in paper itself, you're seeing all kinds of uh promotional materials about Terry and his life and what we're trying to do. Um, and the, the theme here is to get everybody thinking about if Terry were still alive, what would you write to him? What would you want to say to him right now? And we're seeing this happening right now with every time you enroll using our online application, it asks you, would you want to send a note to Dear Terry right this minute? And we're gathering all that material. We're going to have millions of notes and they're going to be compressed uh, and, and analyzed and we'll be able to share those messages across the whole country. And I think it's going to be very, very inspirational. So you're going to see Dear Terry everywhere in, in all the remaining communications. I'll go into the next page. Someone's reworking for me here, right? Oh, hi. Yeah, I, I just thought I'd put in two quick pages here, just a, a little portrait of Terry. I lost the son to cancer. Uh, this really matters to me big time. What I find is sometimes time passes, life takes different little corners than you, you plan sometimes. And you forget the impact of this man and what he has done to our country, to me, myself, my family. He, like, he's just incredible and I sometimes think we forget how incredible he is. I wanted to remind myself by sticking down these dates. This man had a very short life, but man, he had about the most powerful life of any person I can think of. So I won't read dates to you. You can read them, but it's just what a compressed life full of power, full of passion, just incredible. And we can go on, please. Here, I just tried to catch, what did he do? And you've all heard the thing about him running uh, a marathon every single day on one bed leg for a hundred and forty-three days. Think about that. It is incredible. It is awesome. I have trouble walking up the steps in my house with two good legs, right? And this guy did something incredible. He set out to get a buck from every one of us back in nineteen eighty. He's, we now raised, his name has raised over eight hundred and fifty million dollars since nineteen eighty. Just an incredible story. Anything is possible if you try. That was his motto. We're just trying. Okay, we can go on. This is my little numbers chart. I got fancy a couple of years ago and started putting COVID symbols on there and umbrellas. Last year for the, I guess, no, it was two years ago. We, we got shut right down. Basically, we had rain, we had power outages, we had COVID. It was just everything that could go wrong did go wrong. I pulled into Perkins Field Park at six thirty in the morning to open the gate, you know, to let the event happen. And I wanted to just turn around and go home and go back to bed. And I didn't, and neither did another eight hundreds or so people. They stayed up and ran for Terry. And we made a bunch of money. Well, you'll see there the most current numbers we've got uh, on last year is a hundred and seven thousand dollars. The most we've made in many, 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 many years. Uh, just a tremendous thing after all the obstacles we had to overcome. Uh, we kind of surprised ourselves with how good those numbers were. Um, and we're going to do it again, and we're going to do better again. We finished eleventh in Ontario in gross donation, so not a per capita, just the number itself. Eleventh out of two hundred run sites in, in Ontario. We should all be wearing that on our sleeve. It's a badge of pride. It's something we, we are showing everybody that we are the heart of Georgian Bay. And it's not a marketing slogan. We have heart in this community. And we're, we're all working hard to make this chart get better and better and better. Okay, I'll go ahead. Uh, I won't take you through all this. I'll just say we did some stuff right, and that's why we got good results. Looking back, uh, things that made a difference to me was uh, the big differences was we have what we call roamers. You see that kind of black there? On the route, we put a couple of people on bicycles and said, go find trouble and solve trouble. Uh, and, and go help anybody who's feeling like they're stuck on the road. Like, we've kind of got people captive for about three hours, right? They can't go anywhere. And they could get pretty miserable, but we put in helpful resources to let them get in and out if they really, really need to. So that was a good addition. We've engaged air cadets and sea cadets recently because we need to bring youth into this that will carry on Terry, Terry's name and his legacy after we're all gone. The biggest thing last year I would say was Fred Fox, Terry's old elder brother, came here. And he spent two days with us on just one of those days. We did four different events back to back all through the day. And they were just great. He comes, if I ask him to come, he will come here and try and inspire us. And, and it works. He's great at it. We'll go ahead, please. Um, we, we have something here. It's not just a run. A lot of the sites that I mentioned, the two hundred in Ontario, they have a run. You come out, you run a red track, you go home, you're done. We have live music. We have kids entertainment kind of things going on. We have free food. Uh, so it's always a big hit. We have multiple run lengths, two, five and ten kilometers. Do what, do whatever distance you're up to, but do it. And we do, we run an online auction as well that last year gave us over ten thousand dollars. So we're more than a run. Go ahead, please. There's picture of food, you know, food inspires. Food, that's it. But what the real point of the chart is, is look at who gave it to us. I don't spend a cent. I have a budget of zero and we pull off an event like this and we pull it off. Because Tim Horton says, let me give you coffee, donuts, Timbits, et cetera, for everybody in the park. Amazing. Let me say, Pizza Ville gives us eight hundred slices of pizza and says, if you need more, just tell us and we'll have some there in fifteen minutes. It's incredible to give of these people and they're what's making this possible. Okay. The route, won't worry about it too much, but we have, I mentioned the two, five and ten K. And it's a circular route. You go out Bombay Road, you come back down the other side of Bombay Road. You make fun of your neighbors and if they're going the wrong way. Uh, you have a great time. You high five everybody and we just have a good time. We just have to remember, we have locked some people in their houses for a couple of hours. And we have to be patient with them and they have to be patient with us. Okay, we can go ahead, please. Uh, just a couple of little things I wanted to mention. This year we had a great day on Canada Day, Midlands Canada Day. We had uh, a little float in there. Uh, we, we had a Terry replica van to begin with, just that looked like his same color, same finishing, everything. Uh, had him in there. And then we got the OPP brought up a classic cruiser as well from that nineteen eighty time period. And we had them going up the street together, nose to tail, and it just looked like the real thing. All it was missing was Terry. But he brought, he brought Terry to, to that party and to that event. Last thing I'll harp on a little bit today is, uh, I call it the Terry Fox pioneers. Uh, the, at the country level, we're at forty-third year of do, of celebrating Terry's life. Here, we're at forty. We started three years later. When I discovered that, we went out to say, let's go find some of the people who did the, who started us. Who were our pioneers? So we found twenty-nine names. None of them had email addresses, by the way, in nineteen eighty. Surprise, surprise. Um, but we, we found a lot of phone numbers that were totally out of services, full exchanges that rode a service. We nailed it down to ten people we thought we could find and hoped that they were alive and willing to, you know, come with us and make this something. We now have whittled it down to five. Five people will join us on the seventeenth of September. We'll bring them up on the stage and we will cheer our guts out for them because they got us going and they're still going. It's amazing. Uh, and uh, just setting a, setting the trail for us all. So uh, again, I think it's a great idea and, and we'll really celebrate those people. I'll leave that chart there. Thank you. This is my, it's sorry, it's a wordy chart. I'll be careful not to go where all the words take me. Uh, I o- often think, geez, there's a lot of good causes in this world and I could give my money to all kinds of them and be a very broke man. But I have picked this one and I picked it for a reason. Terry's got the most powerful brand in the world in my estimation. Everybody has recognition with Terry and it's always positive. It's had a long lifespan already and it so shows no signs of deteriorating. It's growing like crazy. We're different. We have no charge to join, no charge to eat all that delicious food I talked about. No charge for anything. There's no criteria for entry. You don't have to be so tall or so thin or anything. If you can walk, if you can talk, you don't even have to do those things. Just participate, be part of it. It, it's great. It's cost effective. We get eighty percent of all the money we ever turn in goes to a researcher. So only twenty percent come off the top for overheads, which is pretty damn good comparatively with other charities. We make a difference. I love saving lives. I don't know about you, but I love to say I'm part of saving lives. There's nothing that matters more and this gives me the opportunity to do that and it gives you the opportunity to do that as well. Yep. What can I ask you to do? Not much. It, it's late. I try, I I should have got to you earlier. I wish I had got to you earlier because we probably could have done more. But what you can do is raise a flag in Terry's honor and I'm delighted to see we're actually going to do that. Uh, so that's terrific and introduce me, always introduce me to people who have money. I, I like them and I really want to be their best friend. Really, really. Buy a shirt. Look, you can look as good as me. Nobody laughed there, did they? Uh, create a fundraising event or team of your own. This, this is a team. This can be a cancer fighting team as well as a council. Just choose to do it. It's that easy. Uh, follow us, buy some auction items. I would be delighted. But I'd really like you to come on September seventeenth, Perkins Field Park. Be there at nine o'clock in the morning. We'll have you running by ten. You'll be stuffed full by twelve o'clock and you'll have said, geez, that was a good use of my time. And I think there's one more. That's just my team. I wanted to always mention them. There's eighteen of us now. But we worked for months on this thing to make three hours work really good. That's what it comes down to. We probably put in three hundred hours to make three hours worthwhile for everybody who comes. And I sure hope I will see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, for the fine work that you do on behalf of uh council of the town of Midland. Thank you very much. I'm going to open up for questions from counselors. If there are any questions or comments to be made, uh, feel free to do so. Yes, Counsel Reese.
I just wanted to thank you for volunteering for all the hours that you put in for spearheading something as big as this. Um, honestly, volunteers is what makes charities work. So without somebody taking the lead and continuing it, it would die. So thank you on behalf of everybody in Midland and Terry Fox.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. Counsel Ball.
Thank you. Uh, my kids participate in the Terry Fox Run every uh year at school and it's something that they talk about for the rest of the year. So I think an event like this, it takes an incredible amount of effort on your part. So thank you for that. But I they are the next generation, as you spoke, and they're here for it. They're inspired and events like this equate fun to that, which obviously kids want when they're doing something. So thank you so much for that and I would love to buy a T-shirt. So please let me know where I can do that.
I'll, I'll take that as a formal request. Uh, at the boathouse tomorrow between four and eight.
Thank you, Counsel Ball. Any other uh comments, questions? Yes, uh, your worship.
Thanks again. It's always great to see you year after year. Um, sorry, because we took kind of the summer break. We only had a special meeting. I know you got to other councils um earlier than us. So again, we just reaffirming our support and commitment to the Terry Fox Run. And our flag raising will happen Monday. Deputy Mayor will be present for that one. Unfortunately, I'm coming off a week of vacation and I I, I just have to be back at work on Monday, so I'll be there in spirit with you. Uh, but we'll, we'll probably raise that flag and I'll, I'll do my best to be out to the actual event. And just remind folks that it's run, walk, or even bike. So depending on your mobility challenges, you can bring out the scooter if you want, you know. The, the key is we're putting the, the kilometers in for Terry. And uh, you know, there's no, nobody's looking for you to drop dead. Like, can you imagine me sprinting down there? I'd probably get fifty feet and I needed a febrillator. But uh, I'm going to be there um with my bike and I'll, I'll make sure I do the full circuit. Burn a few calories before I hit the Z.A. So thanks for the presentation and the inspiration.
Thank you, worship. Seeing that, thank you, Mr. Chapman. Uh, we are now moving on to our next deputation. This is fifteen point two. It's the Waypoint Center for Mental Healthcare. And we'll be doing an update. I have Dr. Nadia Sundarjean is the president and CEO. You have the foreman and uh just waiting to hear your presentation. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Uh, that was very inspiring. I'm going to do my best to carry on the theme of helping save lives. Uh, your worship council, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you this evening on behalf of Waypoint as we continue to uh, advance an understanding of mental illness and addictions in our communities and, and Waypoint's unique role in the system. Um, I am uh Dr. Sundarjean. As you said, I'm a psychiatrist by training. Uh, I have been at Waypoint since twenty nineteen. Um, was very grateful to have that one-year head start on the pandemic. Uh, and uh, initially in the role of Vice President, Medical Affairs and Chief of Staff. Um, and I've actually just recently completed uh my first year in my current role. Um, and uh, so glad to have a chance to, to get out and meet with you as I know Carol did for many years. Um, I'm going to hit the highlights of the presentation. I did include a lot of additional material for reference, but I really want to um you know, share some key messages and, and make sure that there's time for any questions or comments uh from the group. Um, maybe we can go to the next slide. Sorry, I'm not sure who is. Thank you. Uh, so on the next slide, um, there's a lot of background information around mental illness and addictions. Um, you know, really what I want to say is that pretty much everyone in this room, either directly or indirectly, has experience. Um, we don't always know about it. Uh, there does still remain unfortunately, a lot of stigma for people to talk about uh, their mental health issues more so than, you know, cancer uh these days. I think we've made progress in that area during the pandemic sadly, because I think mental health challenges have become much more relatable. Um, you know, but there's quite a spectrum of uh complexity and severity to illness and that's where folks like Waypoint come in to really work with those who are at the um severe and complex end of the spectrum. Uh, and we have many partnerships kind of supporting uh capacity building for, for better care all across uh, all the different places where people um may receive support depending on their condition. uh, all the different places where people, um, may receive support depending on their condition. Um, on the next slide, um, you know, we do serve the North Simcoe Muskoka region and really increasingly extending to support Central Ontario as a unique, uh, specialized and expert, um, uh, facility. Uh, so I wanted to share some material about our region's needs. Uh, they certainly have been growing in recent years. Uh, some of that reflects the growth in population in our region. Uh, some of that reflects the impacts of the pandemic, uh, as well, of course, uh, economic impacts have really taken quite a toll as well. Um, there are many more people in need of, uh, acute mental health hospitalization. Uh, they are unfortunately often waiting, uh, for days in emergency departments awaiting an available bed. Um, which is really kind of the worst place, especially for those who, um, you know, are, have a severe condition. It's just not what emergency departments are, are designed to do. We are doing everything we can to step up and support, um, by increasing our, our services. Um, we also know unfortunately, many who don't require an admission are discharged from an emergency department without ongoing, uh, supports or services. Uh, so unfortunately, but unsurprisingly, uh, one in five are returning to an emergency department within a month. Uh, because we haven't really met their needs, um, ongoing. Um, and then I particularly wanted to highlight a few facts about addictions, um, which I know uh, this group is, you know, well aware of and concerned with. Um, we certainly see the growing needs there and those are reflected in hospital visits, emergency departments, and unfortunately tragically also in deaths. Um, I'll move on to the next slide to just talk a little bit about waypoints history and our role. I won't spend a lot of time on our, you know, the, the long, long history, just to say that, you know, we have a, a fine tradition of over a hundred years of caring, uh, for some of the most vulnerable and disadvantaged uh, folks in our communities. Um, you will see some of the language that describes our facility, uh, from, you know, way back when. Uh, reflects an evolution also of, of language and the way that we describe those who experience mental illness. And again, that's, you know, part of our journey around, uh, anti stigma efforts as well. Um, in two thousand and eight, as many of you know, uh, Mental Health Centre at Penetangasheen was divested from the ministry, became born as public hospital under the Public Hospitals Act. Uh, that makes us a teenager as a hospital. And I just, you know, I, I wanted to emphasize that because it means really that we are very rapidly growing and changing as an organization and, and that's, you know, part of why we appreciate the chance to come and talk with you each year about, you know, what we do because we look a little different each year than, than we did the year before. Um, on the next slide, um, you know, none of the work that we do, uh, is done alone. Uh, we have many partnerships uh, provincially, regionally, locally, um, and further afield as well. Um, in particular, in the last couple of years, we've been growing our role with Ontario Health Centre of Excellence for Mental Health and Addictions provincially. Uh, and many of our senior leaders contribute to, uh, their leadership tables, really setting direction for mental health system transformation across the province. So we're glad to be able to bring the perspectives of our local region uh, to inform, uh, how the health system is continually evolving. Um, we are a member of the Simcoe County Hospital Alliance, um, and I really want to thank you for your support for the Community Health Hub, uh, which opened in twenty twenty, uh, just as the pandemic was starting. We weren't able to have our uh, opening ceremony until, uh, this past year. Really appreciated, uh, your presence and just thank you again for the support. It has made a big difference to the way that we deliver care, um, in our community and how people feel to come and get services, uh, with us. We are affiliated with U of T and relatively uniquely in our region have a, a strong, uh, commitment to research and a research institute. Um, and, uh, we've been, uh, growing our role beyond our sort of fine history of research and forensic mental health, increasingly looking at system innovations. Uh, you may have seen some, uh, work that, uh, was reported recently in the media around artificial intelligence and mental health and the ways in which we're exploring how that can make patient care safer. And some other recent accomplishments to highlight, uh, we were very proud to be, uh, credited with exemplary standing. Uh, and a huge shout out to everyone at Waypoint who made that happen. It was a tremendous amount of work, especially as we've been coming out of the pandemic. Um, our Ontario Structured Psychotherapy Program received an award for quality improvement specifically related to making care more accessible, equitable, uh, culturally safe, uh, and effective for, uh, communities that are historically underserved, including the LGBTQOS population, including, uh, indigenous folks, uh, and, uh, black and other people of color. And we, uh, partnered with other organizations and service users, um, to really make care better. Um, so very proud to be able to share that on behalf of all of the partners involved in OSP. Um, and also continually working to make, um, the workplace, uh, experience better for staff. Um, including, uh, of course, you know, folks are very well aware of how burned out healthcare workers have become during the pandemic. So we've really bolstered our emphasis on this, building on many years of, uh, of work advancing psychological health and safety in the workplace. Um, on the next slide, um, this will give you a little bit of an overview of our inpatient services. We have three hundred and fifteen beds, uh, roughly half of those, uh, serve the region. Um, and, uh, those include our acute beds, uh, dual diagnosis is for individuals with both mental illness and intellectual disability. Concurrent disorders refers to those with mental illness and addictions. Uh, geriatric psychiatry, um, transition and recovery, uh, largely focuses on those with schizophrenia and bipolar disorder. Um, and BRAVUP is a regional forensic, uh, program, uh, so distinct from the high secure provincial forensic programs that I'll talk about on the next slide. Uh, so the other roughly half of our beds, uh, serve the entire province of Ontario. Um, we are the only high secure, uh, forensic mental health facility, which means anyone, uh, any man who's come into contact with, uh, the criminal justice system by virtue of their mental illness and requires a highly secure setting uh, gets referred to us. And similarly, uh, folks who are not necessarily in the criminal justice system uh, but are unable to be cared for safely in, in another general hospital, uh, in the province will also often be referred to us. So we, we are very partnered in that work as well, um, and proud of what we're able to bring there in terms of our specialized, um, expertise. Um, on the next slide, um, we really have, this is one of the areas where we've, we've grown a lot actually as we've become tweens, shall we say, and now teens, uh, is really the extent of services that, uh, Waypoint is providing, uh, ourselves and in partnerships, uh, in the community and serving those who don't need to be in hospital, but very much need, uh, specialized care. Um, so the outpatient services that you'll see here are located at the Community Health Hub, co-located with Chicamix and many other supports. Um, and, uh, really trying to take a rehabilitative approach to, you know, looking at all aspects of what people need in their recovery. Um, we were pleased to launch our Family, Child and Youth Mental Health Program, uh, newly during the pandemic. And of course, we all know how impacted children and youth have been by the pandemic. So that was very timely. Um, we've actually just recruited a second, uh, physician specialist to work in that program. Um, and, uh, we've been able to serve thousands of, of, uh, of kids and families already. So very proud of that work. Um, it really dovetails well with the Youth Wellness Hub and, um, you know, part of Waypoint's work is to, um, expand services across the whole lifespan. So I've been talking about youth, but we are also the lead organization, uh, for the specialized geriatric services. Um, which like our child and youth programs really emphasize outreach into primary care and to the different places where people live. Uh, to try to make sure that they get the best possible care, you know, regardless of, of where their team resides. Um, I mentioned OSP before, the psychotherapy program. I particularly want to highlight there, um, it's a newish program. We were one of the leading organizations across the province to introduce it. Uh, we've, um, shown like tremendous results in terms of the benefit that people are getting, who are getting therapy for depression or anxiety. Uh, many, many get better. Uh, the service is free. Uh, there's very little wait for people to engage in, in care. And, and as I said, we've made it um, increasingly accessible and equitable. So I want to, we're working to get the word out because actually there are many more people who could benefit from that service than are currently, you know, self referring or being referred. So I just, you know, want to take the opportunity to share if you know anyone, um, you know, or know of opportunities where we could promote the service. Uh, we really want to connect people up with care better. Um, and I'll talk a bit more about one of the other resources we're using to do that. Um, moving on to the next slide, um, just talking about some of our future directions. Um, I've talked a bit about partnerships and that's a big part of the Waypoint way. Um, the COSH Network or Central Ontario Specialized Health Network is one of the ways in which we're partnering with all the local OHTs across the whole region to kind of build a pathway um, of best evidence based care, whether people are in primary care or in specialty care, um, and really smoothing out all the bumps and gaps that people experience as they try to navigate our so-called mental health system. Um, one of the other areas where we've been partnering is around supportive housing, um, and, um, you know, we, we're, we're well aware of the issues around affordable housing in our region, uh, and more widely. Supportive housing really is about recognizing that housing is healthcare for the people that we serve. Um, and they need not only affordability, but also integrated supports and treatment. Um, and we've been able most recently to partner with Loft. We also have partnerships with CLH and others, but most recently with Loft and Penetangasheen to open some new beds. Um, patients who had been living at Waypoint for years beyond the time that they needed to be in the hospital have been able to transition into the community and continue their recovery and have a much better quality of life. So we've been, uh, you know, so rewarded to see that flourish and, um, are with excitement exploring any other new emerging opportunities to partner and identify suitable, um, spaces uh, where the folks that we live could, uh, that we support, uh, could, could live and, and, um, be healthy in the community. Um, that is part of our strategic focus on what we're calling a waypoint without walls. And really thinking beyond our main campus at five hundred church, um, and how we can, you know, have a greater impact. Um, so housing connects to that and, uh, also to our priority around equity, diversity and inclusion. Um, and all of that links to the, the enabling plans that I mentioned here that sort of specify how we're going to serve, discover and lead over the coming years. Um, master planning, can't go anywhere without talking about this these days. Um, some of you are aware that, uh, Waypoint has been, uh, operating a number of additional acute mental health beds by necessity during the pandemic. We've proposed to the ministry to make those beds permanent and also, uh, to renovate, uh, a vacant floor of our Toonti building to create a suitable environment uh, in which to operate those beds. Um, we are making progress on that front. We hope to, uh, share some good news soon. Um, it is part of our short-term master plan for sure. Longer term, we know that Toonti building does need to be replaced. Um, if you've been on our campus, you will see it's one of the last remaining brutalist pieces of architecture, uh, in healthcare in the province. Uh, it is, uh, way past its, um, you know, date in which it can really be, um, a therapeutic environment for people in terms of the space, in terms of the style, in terms of uh, even just, I don't know, leaks. Can I talk about leaks in our ceiling on this explore? Anyway, like many other hospitals, we are working on our, uh, long-term master plan and, and we will continue to update you as we go along. Um, I want to just leave you with, um, some of the other areas that we're exploring as, uh, potential growth in the future. Um, we know that addictions is a, a real gap in terms of care in our region that, uh, needs are, are rising for sure. Um, as part of that facility growth, we are exploring the possibility of medical withdrawal, which is uh, something that our region doesn't have. That's very evidence-based that most other regions actually have access to. Essentially help people, uh, to, uh, discontinue using substances with the support of medication to do that safely and comfortably. Um, and so we're exploring how we can embed that into the care we deliver. Um, and also as part of that acute bed proposal, um, psychiatric ICU level beds uh, are a big part of the reason why our emergency departments are full of patients waiting for beds. We're one of the only regions in the province that doesn't have psychiatric ICU level beds. Um, you know that when someone needs an ICU bed for a physical health condition, there is a protocol, right? And they move, um, within, you know, a very short period of time, um, in, for, for psychiatric patients who need an ICU level bed, we're counting waits in days. Um, sometimes over a week. So that is part of the, um, the barrier that we're all experiencing, working, uh, working towards resolving and, and appreciate your support, um, in advocacy for, uh, for the projects that will help to address that. I think I will leave things there. Um, I, I think the one, actually the one last thing I would just want to say on our future services is just to say one of the things that I love about Waypoint that inspired me, uh, to pursue leadership at Waypoint was um, that it's not just about us, like the way in which we partner to advocate for what are the right services, uh, where people need them and where the investment should go. It's not, it's not like I've told you about the things that Waypoint needs, but um, you know, the cr- crisis services, for example, in the community, some of those addiction services, like there's a lot of other areas where there's potential for investment and, uh, we've been talking about those as well with decision makers to try to advocate for growth in the community where uh, investments have also very much been, been lagging. Um, so I'll leave you with, uh, you know, we are one of your hospitals. We know we're not your only hospital, but we are one of your hospitals and we are very grateful uh, for the support that you provide us to, uh, enable us to care for the residents of this community. Um, we, I, I've included in here a list of some of the, uh, services that folks can access freely and book their appointments online through this website, onedor.ca. It's like finally healthcare is catching up to your dentist and your hairstylist and your everyone else who has online appointment booking. This has been a very popular platform actually, um, and, uh, um, it is one of the places where people connect, can connect with the Ontario Structured Psychotherapy Program that I mentioned earlier. Um, we're really looking forward to the gala on December eighth. Um, at the Midland Cultural Centre. Last year in the COVID era, I actually was unable to attend. So I very committed to being well and being there and hope to see, uh, as many of you as possible. Um, and just some other, uh, thoughts there for you about how you can learn more about us, um, and/or connect yourselves or others that you know, uh, and care for um, with our services. So maybe I'll leave things there, but, um, thank you so much for your time and attention and, um, happy to take questions and comments if, uh, if there's time.
Thank you, Dr. Sundarji, for the update and sharing information about what you do at Waypoint. And I'm going to open this up now to any of the counselors to ask questions on the presentation. And great information this evening. Are there any, any questions, comments? Yes.
I'll kick things off. Thank you, Doctor, for the presentation. Um, I'm no stranger to Waypoint and the, the wide variety of amazing services you provide to our, to all of North Simcoe, arguably the province. Um, a couple of things. Last night, as you know, we're struggling in our community right now with, uh, homelessness, uh, bookended by addiction, poverty, you know, just lack of access to, uh, housing, the whole mess. And one of the, uh, I guess one of the observations that some of the folks that are most connected or feel this most is that there's a feeling that uh, people are being discharged from institutions such as Waypoint or arguably, uh, Central Correctional Center um, into homelessness into the community. You know, maybe largely because this is where the supports are and there's nowhere else to go. Um, but I'm just wondering from a discharge planning perspective, I wasn't able to really, um, counter that, you know, narrative yesterday when I was having this conversation. I thought maybe you could share with the community what discharge planning looks like for inpatients becoming, you know, out into the community or when they, when they choose to voluntarily leave if they have that option.
Absolutely. That's a great question. So, um, you know, every single one of our inpatient units has social workers uh, who work very closely with, uh, the patients that we serve as well as their families, if they have families and other, um, contacts. Uh, in order to, um, you know, generate the safest possible, uh, discharge plan for someone, uh, in accordance with their wishes and, um, unfortunately, resource constraints are often a big part of that, both for the individual being served as well as, um, for the community. So um, you know, we work with folks from the very first day that they arrive, uh, you know, with some idea of how long they might be with us and everything that we can do. Um, in a, you know, well-rounded, whole person centered way to address their, uh, needs from the outset. Um, you know, I mentioned a little bit earlier, there have been patients who have lived with us for years because there is no suitable, uh, you know, alternative for them outside of a hospital setting. you know, alternative for them outside of a hospital setting. We cannot do that for every person that we serve, right? And especially if you think about the needs for acute mental health beds. And it's extremely challenging. It's very morally distressing for our staff, as you can imagine, because they know, you know, that homelessness really impacts the outcomes that people will have following, you know, best efforts to treat and, 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 and get people well. And so, you know, there was a time during the pandemic when shelter services were expanded. We had access to motels and other settings that enabled flow from hospitals. That is not the case anymore. And I don't have the exact numbers, but I think it's fair to say that, you know, there may be a few folks who are discharged without stable housing. We unfortunately don't have the, you know, we don't have a magical supply that we have access to that we are, as you know, you know, working to explore. You know, what options we can develop over time to, as to support people in the community. So I hope I've answered your question. It's, it's a complex, not quite yes or no sort of answer, but a journey that we're on together.
Thank you. And just in follow-up, in promoting the O S P initiative and other initiatives, we have our community safety symposium that we're co-hosting with the county on October nineteenth, Thursday, October nineteenth. And if you haven't got the invite yet, I know we talked informally about it, but you guys will be, if not keynotes, you know, big participants in that community safety symposium, not only in the sort of afternoon sessions and the brainstorming, but also in the panel session, which is public Q and A in the evening. So that agenda is still being finalized. But that's a great place to promote all the services that you do provide and also talk to people about gaps, you know, whether it's volunteers or staffing, you know, we're hoping we have a good turnout of this and with any luck, it'll be fruitful for all the participants.
Wonderful. Thank you. It sounds like a very important event. We're, we're happy to have the opportunity to contribute and support. I think we were meant to send you a name of someone who could join a committee. So if we haven't done that, please nudge me and we'll, we'll follow up afterwards, but I totally agree. It could be a very great opportunity to spread the word about services and as much as we can be intervening upstream before we get to the kinds of scenarios that we've just been talking about, I think so much the better. And that's very much what O S P does.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Are there any other questions? Yes, councillor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Conton. And thank you for, for the presentation. Very, very informative. And, and one of my questions was about the symposium that Mayor Gordon just asked you about and hopefully I'm surprised that you're not on the docket yet and no one's asked you to, to be a part of it because we need all partners involved to, to try to solve a little piece of the issue of mental health and homelessness, et cetera, as we just came from the A M O conference and we know that not one person or agency is going to solve the problem. So hope, hope, hope to see a representative there. Just to follow up to Mayor Gordon's question about when, when a patient does get released from Waypoint and your services. So the answer in, in short would be yes, they would get released without any supervision because of lack of staff. You did mention there, there, there's a couple, but there's a couple mean.
Uh, sorry, I should clarify. I wasn't talking about discharge without ongoing like treatment or support. If someone is in need of ongoing care, whether, you know, medical or from another member of the team and they are, you know, accepting of it, we absolutely will keep them connected to services. And that's a big part of what our outpatient service has been focusing on these days is, you know, making sure that we follow up within seven days of discharge. You know, every patient who requires ongoing, ongoing care. So I, I think I may have misunderstood the question, but I, I was speaking more to the issue of housing and scenarios where, you know, we may not be able to secure stable housing for somebody ongoing. You know, but should we not have them leaving the hospital that again contributes to that? You know, then there's how many folks waiting in emergency departments for the bed that is being occupied by someone who doesn't need to be there anymore, but doesn't have a better place to go. So that's sort of the ethical tension that we're continually kind of navigating in those day-to-day care decisions.
Thank you, councillor. Any other questions? Councillor Ball?
Hi, thank you. I'm actually an employee of Waypoint, both inpatient and outpatient. So I'm lucky enough to be able to see the work that Waypoint does and is trying to do on a daily basis. So I just wanted to thank you for coming here. I'm glad to see your name on here. So someone with your level of expertise can showcase what Waypoint does because I, I couldn't eloquently speak about it if I wanted to. So I appreciate your expertise, being able to come and show us what Waypoint is doing. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much. And I could have sworn I recognized your name. I just couldn't figure out from where. So you know, I think what I, I guess what I would say to that is I, I think, you know, we know we are a major employer in our region and that every person who works at Waypoint, you know, is an important contributor to the services and an ambassador for us in the community. So you know, I've heard so many staff regardless of their roles or longevity at Waypoint speak like with passion, with caring, you know, and such commitment to what we do. So I thank you also for everything that you do for us.
Thank you very much, councillor. Any other questions? Seeing, seeing none. Thank you, doctor, and thank you to, to your staff for showing this, this evening to present and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks very much and have a good night.
Councillor, we're going to be moving on now to number seventeen, sixteen. There are no committee or local board delegation or memo reports this evening, which now goes on to number seventeen. It's on reports and other items withdrawn from consent agenda for council's consideration includes presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. We do have seventeen point one. It's the twenty twenty-three A M O Conference. We have our C E O, Ron DeBun, provided a verbal update to be received as information. You have the floor, Madam C E O.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and through, through you, the members of council. So on August twentieth to twenty-third, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario A M O held their annual conference in London, Ontario. The, I was fortunate to be able to attend alongside Mayor Gordon, Deputy Mayor Conton, councillors Ball, Meredith and Prost, as well as Acting Director of Planning, Steve, Steve Farkason. So what I found was the benefit of going as a team was really the ability to go to the various sessions that they held. So there was a lot of sessions. It was action-packed days. And some of those sessions included, you know, infrastructure and asset management, planning legislation, affordable housing and homelessness prevention, youth engagement, indigenous services, and there were many more relevant topics as well. So some of them that were highlights for me, I was able to attend the Women's Breakfast where the Honorable Elizabeth Dowd, Dowd, Dowdswell, the Lieutenant Governor of Ontario spoke, and then later being able to hear Ontario Regional Chief Harris speak. So both were, you know, really educational, but really, you know, insightful and very inspiring as well. So we also were able to have an ad hoc meeting and meet with the Honorable Khalid Rashid, who is the Minister of Public and Business Service Delivery and was able to discuss some development and, and growth opportunities. As well as we did have a meeting with the Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Sport, which went extremely well. I, you know, will, will maybe leave if the mayor or deputy mayor wanted to expand on that, but I will say that it was, went over very well at three o'clock in the afternoon to provide butter tarts. So that was a, you know, a bonus and kudos to the team for coming up with that. So, and some of the highlights of the day were, you know, the, the new three-year, one point two billion dollar Building Faster Fund that was announced and, and discussed. I was able to attend a session on the gas tax funding and calculations and although they didn't have a lot of information as to how it would move forward in twenty twenty-four, it appeared that it would be very similar to what exists today. And, you know, the final day for, for me, and you know, it's, it's timely to be talking about this after our last deputation, but the morning session of the homelessness and housing affordability items that happened in the entire morning on the last day were for me a huge highlight. I, you know, the, the panel discussions were incredible. They really had really a diverse group of people that were speaking in that morning from the province and, and other areas and hearing what London and Kingston were doing with, you know, in innovative ways was really interesting as well. So you know, I walked away from that session, understanding more and really having more of a desire as well to, you know, to, to be a part of a solution. So it was a success and, you know, I was happy to be a part of it and I will maybe pass it over to see if anyone else wanted to comment on the session.
Your worship.
Thanks. That was a great summary, Madam C E O. So it was a, absolutely. It's a worthwhile event. I strongly encourage all councillors who get the time off. Use your trading budget and go to this conference. This is the one big one. There are several letters you can choose throughout the year, you know, the Roma ones, Good Roads and whatnot, but the A M O is the big one. I think it's important to be there because the sheer volume of sort of parallel sessions that aren't repeated, you only get one chance to see them and you physically can't be in more than one room at once. So you really need to have a small collective of your council there. It's always great if you get the whole, whole team there because I hosted dinner. It's lots of fun, but you know, it was good. I think we had good representation. And then the other key is you bring back what you learned to council because we recognize now everybody can clear their schedule or get away for that time. So you bring that back and you put that into action and you figure out, you know, through notice of motion or through other policy things or lobbying efforts, how can we move the ball forward from Midland based on what we've learned from our peers, both smaller than us, same size as us and far larger. I think the one takeaway, especially around the homelessness, you know, mental health and addiction files is that we're, we're all in this together. And terms almost been overused over the pandemic, but we truly are. It's just an economy of scale. No community, large or small, is immune from its effect. Midland of fear, you know, feels like we're, you know, being drowned. This isn't the same town that most of us grew up in that we remember historically. You know, in our minds, this is still Mayberry, believe the doors unlocked, key under the mat in the car. It's just not our world anymore. And with the advance of, you know, more blended narcotics coming into our community and the fact that addiction is a disease. You know, it's seen by many still through stigma as some kind of moral failing. Well, you know, why did you let yourself get addicted to these substances? Well, that may be true for some people, the large majority of them, you know, the brain and your body's system takes over and, and addiction is now your life. You couldn't get off of it if you wanted to by yourself. So clearly there's the odd success story who can manage it themselves, but they're the outlier. So we are, I wouldn't say we're anywhere near drowning yet, but we look at some of the larger municipalities, they truly are. So we need to be prepared for that. I think when you look at the, the things that this council's done already, especially around rallying around the community safety symposium concept that was brought to us and partnering with the county and really looking forward to hoping that, hosting that and looking for solutions and learning more about the many service providers in town and how they connect and how they work together. Any gaps that are found in that service delivery and what role the community plays in this? So that's the other thing, key takeaway, even from like my Zoom chat, town hall I hosted on, you know, so you have a drug house in your neighborhood, what can be done? I think that was well attended. I had lots of good input. And I do apologize that we couldn't get more public questions in that moment, but that stems from takeaways from at A M O. These are things that inspire me to, you know, to try and do more outreach in our community, listen to the community's concerns and then try and form formulate policy in response to it. So it was a really good session, meeting with the minister, talking about our Great Lakes cruising strategy and getting our sea wall repaired and the, and the waterfront master plan funding, which is a significant chunk of money, you know, as you remember, we didn't approve that in the last budget, trying to keep the numbers down. But that work needs to be done. So we were lobbying the province and we got kudos, not just for the butter tarts. Thank you to Karen Mealing for reminding me to pick those up on the day. But for the fact that we weren't in there asking for, you know, the tens or twenty million dollars it's going to take to repair our sea wall so that we can be host to these larger cruise ships and more than one at a time. We weren't in there just handing out, you know, handout, asking for that. We actually were asking for probably the smallest sum he'd heard in his tenure because we wanted to do a, a plan first. And councils are typically criticized for all we do is hire consultants, you know, or consultant, consultant, every who spends money is consultants, but we were, you know, praised by the province for having the foresight to, you know what, you're asking for this relatively paltry sum. And it's for hiring consultant to help us build this master plan out so that we, then we know what phase and what types of construction and how we want to change our, our waterfront. So it becomes a real profit center for this community and a tourism attractor. They gave us big kudos for coming in with a thoughtful ask like that, that we were actually wanting to plan first. So we're not, you know, shoot first, ask questions later. I tend to like to just get to the bottom of things and let's just do it and fix it. But, you know, sometimes it's good to have the people that do this with the billions of dollars in their budgets to pump the brakes and, and recognize that, hey, you know what, there is thoughtful planning involved. We've been hearing this from our staff. Mr. Campbell's been telling us for a couple of years, we got to get this master plan done before we just start fixing things hodgepodge. So for me, the takeaway was validating the good work and, and the wisdom that we're getting from our own in-house team. It's the, the direction we got to, how to apply for some funding for this master plan, which is welcome news. There's direct funding that we got pointed to that would fit right into this. So hopefully we're successful. And the fact that in the end, all these communities, mayors, deputy mayors and councillors that were there and the other provincial politicians, we really are committed to working together towards making things better in our communities. And we only can do that when we work together and we talk together and we share and learn, share what works and share what doesn't work. So I, as usual, I had a great conference and I loved this was in person again. I did the two, you know, Zoom ones during the plague years and it wasn't the same. It just wasn't the same as being there. So that's, those are my high level perceptions from this. I could ramble on because I really did have a good time and learned lots, but I wouldn't mind hearing from the other councillors able to join us on what their takeaways were.
Councillor Ball?
Thank you. Yeah, I find the A M O was a incredibly successful event. I was surprised by the amount of information that was there. Obviously there were extremely long days, but the information was all relevant. It was all substantial and the amount of ability to connect with other municipalities and see what they've been able to do and able to accomplish, I think was a big eye opener for a lot of us to be able to try to see if we can do something like that in Midland as well as what has been done and hasn't worked for other municipalities, like we can already cross that off our list. So I think that was a really good takeaway for me. I've already started setting up meetings to see what our ability for Midland and what we can do to kind of, I guess, replicate some of these ideas that other municipalities are using, just so I can bring that back in the future. I am excited about that. And I think that even the trade show, we're all just seeing all the companies that have products for municipalities that they've developed to make things run smoother, like speed initiatives that we had talked about previously this council term already. I thought that was a really big takeaway as well. So I found it really, really successful and really informative and I'm looking forward to next year.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillor Meredith?
Thank you. I'll just add to that. All your points are, you know, I feel the same way. I had the biggest, you know, got to see the, the minister's forum, which was, you know, for first time councillor, that was, you know, something to see all the, all the ministers there, all in one room and kind of skirting around the questions, but, you know, not giving you the direct answers, but that you wish you'd, you'd hear, but the fat chance in that anyways. And, and the vendors I got to, you know, our, our, lo and behold, our, our parking meter vendor was there and I got to grill them with some, some questions and I got some information. And some of the answers I liked and some I didn't. So what, what we could do with them, but anyways, but all in all, a positive experience and good to go to, you know, different rooms and then chats and then discuss with town staff on what we learned and bring forth, you know, just educating ourselves and. And and the big hot topic at the end of the day was the homeless homeless forum, which I was disappointed that the the amount of people that didn't stick around for it because it is not from our community, not from our council, our whole council was there. But in general, the minister's forum was was jam packed, not a seat in the house. And then something as as important as homelessness, mental health, you know, three quarters of the seats were were empty. So that was very disappointing to me to see that. So a lot of the information there was excellent and and we got some really great answers and insight on on what they are doing, their municipalities and cities are doing. And the answers we got from the ministers were, well, as I said, not very accurate and direct, kind of squirting around the the questions. So so the people that didn't participate in in the homelessness forum, they they missed out on a lot of good information. But overall, I love the experience.
Thank you, counselor. Anybody else? Or counselor post?
I'll say something. I really just, there's not much else to say. Counselor Ball and Counselor Meredith really summed it up. I really think A M O is important. I think networking and learning and everything that you consume in those few days, it it takes weeks to kind of break it down. But you do get a lot of emails and going through those, you know, you can make your notes. I guess it's just beneficial. There are other ways and I think it empowers us. We need to be empowered in Midland so that we can, you know, take the bull by the horns and do what we need to do for our public. I think it's helpful.
Counselor. I'll just say a few words. This session myself was my my fifth one going to A M O. And I think the fact that I enjoy really networking with other counselors from other communities. And it was important to hear other areas to find out what their issues are. Then I looked at Midland because Midland is is considered to be a small urban town. And you look at other areas that are in rural areas or they're big city areas, large population. But what the one thing that came out that was focused was the issues which is handed down to municipalities. So hearing the individuals from counselors say what their issues are and problems and dealing with this. I think we're we're not alone. And I think it's was really enjoying to to hear the comments. I met a counselor from Moonbeam. I don't know if you know where Moonbeam is. I didn't know where it was. Sounds like I said, well, that's a cute little name. But Moonbeam is in shop, north of Chapel Oak. And she was telling me about, the counselor was telling me about the issues that they were facing. And I said, well, gee, we have problems like that too. And so it really was a focus of people coming together that I really enjoyed to hear and listen to other community problems and how they're dealing with it and they're dealing with homelessness, affordable housing. I went to a a new partnership that A M O had put together with the Women's Association. The county is looking at something like this just just recently that came out on the email. We're working with Indigenous Women, Women's Association. I think that's something that's new that came out of A M O. So there are creative ways that have come out of A M O. And I think it's worthwhile for any counselor to go and and learn. And you always learn and pick something up. And that's what happened to me. I really enjoyed the time we had with the Minister of Tourism. I had an opportunity because I've been to two meetings like this with the minister. I'd like to congratulate Steve on his report, very clear and concise. But it also gave a reflection on the history, the the evolution of the boat cruising industry. It's going to grow. So I think the fact that we need to take action and I think that what we what was presented was well received by the minister and the staff. And hopefully it'll pan out to be very fruitful for us. But I think the fact that I was proud to be with the counselors that were there because they all showed an interest in promoting our community as being a special place. And so that's what I picked up and I'd like to thank our C A O for for being there and being aware that there's a lot to be learned as well as our our fellow counselors that did attend, including the mayor. So that was just my take on it. So thank you very much. Yes, Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cotton. Just glad everybody came back enthused about their position. Just when you mentioned the report that was given to the Minister of Tourism, would it be possible for the council to see that report? Share it with us? I'd be interested in reading it.
I'm sure I'll have our planning department have responded to that.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I'm sure we can find Andy's report that we can Karen's report, we can circulate. Yeah, so we can, we can definitely get that and circulate it to council so they're aware.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, I think, oh, yes, counselor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, just just this, this was my first opportunity to go to A M O as well. And I found it very interesting, like the deputy mayor said, to see the networking that's going on in between sessions. When you're in the the concourse and you're hearing the issues that are being discussed amongst the counselors, it's definitely very interesting and to see that we're not alone. And it was definitely the last day, it was a little disheartening to see that there was a lot of people that did leave because the homelessness seminars and presentations were really good. And from from a planning perspective, we know the housing crisis and that's everyone's, you know, top of everyone's list. I attended the O P P I one just to make sure that the the messaging that us as planners are are giving to our councils and our and the public is consistent with the messaging from O P P I. And Paul Lowe, who's the president of O P P I, did a great job in in providing, you know, the planning analysis and what O P P I does. And just to make sure that the messaging that we're providing and the information we're giving to you as members of council is is consistent. The minister's forum was very interesting. We were, we were front row. We were literally right in the front row. So you could see the the sweat beating off of the minister's foreheads when they were getting asked some of these questions. So it was definitely an interesting experience, easy as from from a staff perspective, to be attending that type of conference and the workshops and and, you know, being around the ministers and hearing all the the types of issues that that other surrounding municipalities are dealing with as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much for that, sharing that information. If there are no other comments, we'll move on now to item number eighteen, which is notices of motion. I'm going to ask any counselors, are there any notices of motion to be made this evening from any of the counselors? Counselor McDonald.
I have two notices of motion. Oh, thank you. So we're looking after each other here. The first notice of motion I I thought of after I read all the fire department's bylaws, that they discovered that the current version was twenty eight years old and did not align with expectations of the Fire Prevention Act or meet legislative changes. I thought it would be to, that my notice of motion is to provide a list of current bylaws that are being followed, provide them to council and that if deemed necessary, an ad hoc committee be established to review the list and prioritize proposing those that require immediate attention and repeal those that are no longer apply. And this comes from my experience as a trustee. We had a board policy review committee and we reviewed our policies, which is more or less our bylaws. It's just I'm putting it out there for consideration. It, to me, would be worthwhile, but it's up to my fellow counselors and administration to advise me about that. And my second notice of motion is in regards to our agenda tonight. I thought it would be, I'm proposing the notice of motion to provide council the opportunity to review the current agenda format and the council meeting schedules to include meetings in July and August. And those are my two notices of motion. The format review is in regards to the consent agenda. Do we feel it's serving its purpose or not? It was established by previous councils. I don't know how this council feels and I think we should have the opportunity to discuss it after we've got almost a year under our belt. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Do we have any of the staff members to respond to this, just in terms of?
No, we're not. Sorry, just to interject here. So there can't be any discussion about the rationale or anything. You literally with a notice of motion, read the notice of motion in, that's it. And then provide it in wording, the time to debate its merits and why you're doing and all that stuff has to be held up. I know it's hard, but it has to be held off until the next meeting and that's when you get to argue your point around it. And staff aren't gonna, they can't, there's otherwise, we're starting to debate this notice before it's officially had its, you know, time to percolate with the community. So just just a procedural note there.
Great, thank you, worship, for that clarity. Just wanted to make sure that they got the proper wording for the notice of motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor McDonald advised that she has it written out, so she'll be providing it to me by the end, at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Are there any other notices of motion from council this evening? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item then. We are under number nineteen, general announcements. Are there any general announcements from counselor, Counselor Ball?
Thank you. This ties in nicely, I guess, to this evening because we talked about both the Community Health Hub and the impact of cancer. The Community Health Hub is actually hosting a breast cancer and testicular cancer awareness for youth and families on Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty three, from six to eight P M with Laura Larson as an R N running that. So if you're interested in that, you can get ahold of Chigamick or the North Somego Youth Wellness Hub to go to that event.
Thank you, counselor. Any other announcements? Yes, your worship.
I'm always good for a couple. So first of all, just about the the Zoom virtual town hall that I hosted about drug houses and what the sort of multidisciplinary approach that I'm going to be suggesting the council adopt. I'll be doing that through notice of motion, but I'm not going to read it in tonight. I'll just file it, you know, before the deadline for the next meeting. But I do want to admit that I didn't have enough time for a lot of audience participation, which was my goal. By the time we got through with a round of, you know, intros and quick bios and and what everyone does, which I think was very important for context, it didn't leave us a lot of time left in an hour. So we only ended up having three people speak. So just my takeaway, just letting the community know is next time I'll, well, because there will be a next time. We'll just print all the bios and the background information online and you can read that at your own leisure. And we'll just kind of get right into the Q and A because I think that was a very worthwhile. So just wanted to thank the fifty or sixty people that joined that. The recording is available on my website on YouTube. There's been some discussion that, you know, why just have it on my site? Let's put it on the town's YouTube so it's, you know, more accessible to the people that look there. That's something I'll work with the clerks about if that's appropriate and happy to, we'll get that transferred over. But again, just thanks to everyone who cared enough to sign up and participate and submit your questions. And there's lots of work to be done and watch the next meeting when I propose the framework and and staff's input on how that framework would work for a response policy. My second announcement is our, for our finance department, and that's that our two thousand and twenty four draft budget survey has been announced and you will find links to it on our town page. And this is your opportunity, the survey is running between September first to October tenth. And this is really your opportunity to have your say into the two thousand and twenty four budget. So we'll be asking you about priorities, what thing, what things you think, you know, need to be funded better or, you know, maybe you don't think that we need them anymore, let's fund them less. It's really your opportunity to have your say. Staff takes every one of these comments and your ratings to heart and they will, so be gentle. And they will use that to form the budget draft that'll be published on December sixth. Council gets that. And then December seventh, the whole one whopping day later, it gets released to the public. So you guys will see what we see and have a chance to parse it and review it. And then from December thirteenth to January twelfth, that's the public and council Q and A period. So that's your opportunity to stand and deliver and ask us questions here. And I really look forward to those. Some years we've had dismal attendance or none. We really, really, it's valuable to have you come and talk to us and let your council know what's important from what you see in that draft budget or what you don't see in it. So just a shout out for our finance team. This is, this budget's really important. It's part of our commitment to community engagement. They're not just two words we like to use. We're really walking that walk. So please avail yourself of that and you'll find the links on the midland.ca website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Any other announcements this evening? Seeing none, we are now on our last item. It's a motion to close committee of the whole and to resume formal council session. I do have a motion here moved by Counselor East, seconded by Counselor Meredith, that the committee of the whole rise and report. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. I'll pass the chair to you, worship.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I have a motion moved by Counselor Ball, seconded by Counselor Ball, that the recommendations of the committee of the whole for the meeting of September sixth, two thousand and twenty three be adopted as resolutions of council. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Next, I have a motion moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by, so this, sorry, this is just for those following along. This is motions for which notice was given. Item twenty two point one was withdrawn. That was the one about Pride Crosswalks that will be revisited later at another council meeting. So twenty two point two is a motion present presented by Counselor McDonald that I'll read in a moment, but I do need a seconder to get on the floor. Someone like to second this motion, Counselor Post. Thank you very much. Staff review bylaw ninety seven dash thirty six, which is a bylaw to prohibit the feeding of Canada geese and seagulls within municipal parks and bring forward a staff report at a future regular council meeting to consider the prohibition of feeding all wild animals and birds within the town limits. I will turn the mic over to Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. Mayor Gordon. And thank you to Ms. Doherty, who's in the audience that brought for her presentation in June. I'd like to suggest that there'd be a small amendment to to the notice of motion, whereas the feeding of small birds on no spill feeders would be acceptable. This is a request that we do a study. There has been some, the concerns were brought to our attention about feeding the wild animals, how it causes concern and and not only for your own property, but for the animals themselves that aren't leaving a particular area because they're being fed and not doing their migration path. And also, it brings to mind that the geese in our little lake area and the waterfront, well, Peterson Park and Golly Park, how we don't get to enjoy it. I know it's it's not a problem just for Midland, but there, maybe there could be some research and seeing how other people might be dealing with this issue. there, maybe there could be some research and seeing how other people might be dealing with this issue. So I'm hoping that my fellow counselors will support this staff report for future consideration.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. I, I do want to definitely talk about the no spill bird feeders. I don't know if we need a report to go ahead and vote for that, but if that's what we're leaning towards, then that's definitely due diligence. I know that we had a really lengthy report brought to us in June about the effects of that, and I think that that's a reasonable ask to have a no spill bird feeder because these people are still able to enjoy feeding the birds in their own backyard. But we're not, I guess, giving larger animals the free rein to have that in the attraction.
Counselor Ball.
Yes, thank you. I walk my dog at the Little Lake Park at least twice a day. And there is, what I say is the peanut lady. She has bags of peanuts. And she, every, every time I see her, she has these bags. So I don't know, and there are posted things saying do not feed the animals, but she's, she, she comes later when all of the, you know, the operators and the people who cut the grass and everything. She comes after supper and she, she spreads all these peanuts all over the place. So I don't know how we can, it's a bylaw that is good, but I don't know how we would how we would deal with that. So, thank you.
Counselor Ball.
I just want to make a comment about peanuts for the general public. I don't know if they have this knowledge when they're feeding animals, but kids with allergies to peanuts, that is carried all through the animals, carry that to every other area. And kids with peanuts, I know personally people that have to go around and pick up in the springtime peanut shells before they can let their kids outside. So if you are choosing to feed the animals, which I'm not going to say to do that, but I think that you should be really mindful that peanuts, you may not even realize, are really harmful to kids in the community.
Counselor Meredith.
Is, is there any current bylaw about feeding geese or in, in Little Lake Park? I believe there, like, there must be one from a while back. There is. Okay. So we.
Yeah, it's a prohibited activity right now. The suggestion is that it be, you know, tightened up so that it includes people's residences and their backyards, so it's not just parks. And, you know, the wording right now is the scope of pretty much anything. Eating all wild animals, and that could be tweaked or modified to some degree to provide some forgiveness to people feeding the chickadees or the hummingbirds or what have you. But I think this kind of goes into what Counselor McDonald talked about earlier, some of our dated bylaws, and there are many that should be subject to review and that, you know, a wholesome, a fulsome list of those bylaws and how old they are, you can tell by their title. And what priority we'd like to, to parse those and review them. This, you know, maybe this is one of the ones that trickles to the top. And then the other part of this is, you know, enforcement. So, you know, we're, right now, we're clearly struggling with enforcing, you know, Peanut Lady as one example. And others who, you know, will just, for whatever reason, feed ducks and, and geese and whatever else, anything wild around them. And for the most part, it probably doesn't impact many people in the community, and you get some folks who take it to the extreme, and I've seen photos. You know, where neighbors can't even get out in their backyard because, you know, they'll be dive bombed or attacked by, you know, any number of animals, fur bearing and webbed footed and otherwise. So I think the, the key here is perhaps we need to maybe look at our enforcement regime and maybe tighten up our enforcement or bolster it, which I think we've just done by hiring a couple of part-time bylaw folks. And maybe look at enforcing some of the bylaws we have now, and before we try to tighten the rules down any further, it should be my suggestion is because we can put all kinds of prohibitions in place, but with no realistic expectation of enforcement. I know I've said this over and over again about all kinds of things we come up with. It almost seems pointless because the people that are law-abiding and follow the rules now, for the most part, common sense prevails, and they're not leaving bait in their backyard for coyotes and stuff like that, but there will be the odd outlier who will. So on its face, I, I support the, the concept of this. I think we don't really get lost in the wording of it because we're asking staff to basically review this ancient bylaw and bring it up to speed and look at what other communities have done, you know, because a lot of times past since ninety-seven. We don't need to put a whole lot of meat on this other than ask, you know, look for harmonization of this bylaw with our neighbors and other, other municipalities and maybe find ways to update it. And if we choose to make that a priority over other bylaws that maybe also are deserving of update, recognize that we have limited manpower. Then, you know, we can set that priority list for our staff. So the long and short of it is, you know, I, I'm prepared to support this because I think staff understand that, you know, it just means doing some research and coming back with a report. And then we'll have to parse the report and the recommendations and see if the juice is worth the squeeze and if we have an ability to actually enforce this. Those are my thoughts on it for what it's worth. Yes, I'm proud I'm controlling the mics here. Counselor Meredith.
I, I'm just, I thi- I think we're, I think I'll stand on this where we already have the, the bylaw. Feeding geese and seagulls in municipal parks. I think I would stop there. Get that enforced if we can, you know, when we get the manpower to enforce, because I can't see enforcing feeding bird feeders or anything in, in your backyard. And I, I don't even want to waste staff's time on a report until we could actually enforce the bylaw that's already in place. So that's where I stand on, on this one. So, thank you.
Counselor Post, and then back to Counselor McDonald.
I tend to agree with Counselor Emeritus because bylaws are only as good as the enforcement. If we can enforce them, then what's, there's no point. People are just continue to do what they want to do. And in sometimes it's a ripple effect. Well, I can get away with this. I can get away with that. It could get worse. I don't know, but I think trying to push something that we can't control right now is probably the least of our worries and remembering about this peanut lady, she looks like a sweet lady. I think she truly means she's doing well. I think possibly educating her, the right person. I've never actually talked to her, but she just, I think that's just what she does. And it makes her so happy to go feed the animals, from what I've seen anyway. So maybe some education on her part, but I think in trying to create more bylaws that we can enforce is a waste of everybody's time and effort.
Counselor McDonald for some follow-up, and then Counselor Ball.
Thank you. I guess I'm encouraging this bylaws. At least the, the person that is enduring or persons. The problem of someone feeding the squirrels, rats, muskrats, whatever in your neighborhood can say at least there's a bylaw. Whether, if, if there's a complaint, there's a bylaw. Right now, that person has no place to go. And so that's why I thought we should consider introducing it. And we can say there's a bylaw. Just like not saying that's going to be, it's someplace to go.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. I also wanted to say with the bylaws in place, the one that's existing and the one that's proposed that maybe we just continue to talk about submitting that service request that I don't think we've done it. And as much of a job as we can to, to say that it's out there and that's a trackable, enforceable. I guess measurable thing that the town actually can have instead of just complaining about it. There's, there's an avenue to get your complaint forward that's being tracked and viewed with the service Midland. So if you have somebody that you're seeing doing this, that there is a bylaw in place, that at least we have a I guess avenue, like Catherine McDonald was saying, to be able to at least track this and try to enforce bylaw at different hours, or I don't know what we can do to be able to have more bylaw presence, but at least we know we need it. If it's a trackable service.
Counselor Meredith.
Thank you. Is, is Mr. Mr. Smiley with us tonight? Like online? No. I just wanted to know if there was any statistics on complaints coming in for feeding animals such as what Catherine McDonald was saying, whether it's rats or rodents of that kind in, in backyards and, and maybe the data or, or that kind of, those numbers might be able to be put forth, if any.
Ms. Burkeerson.
Through your worship, through my discussions with Mr. Smiley, there hasn't been any complaints in regards to this. So I don't think we would have that data there. If, if we do, maybe there's data on feeding of, of animals within our parks, which is what our bylaw currently covers. But it's my understanding that, no, they don't cover private property. There's no doubt on that. Thank you.
Yes, a follow-up to those, but if there were complaints from private property owners, you would have those on record?
Through your worship, probably not. The response would probably be we don't have a bylaw. It doesn't, it, it doesn't cover that. So much like the discussion here, if someone did call saying my neighbor's feeding you know, squirrels, peanuts, we're not, we're not going to go out and enforce anything because we don't have a bylaw there to enforce it. And we don't, we don't keep track of those types of inquiries. To the best of my knowledge, that's something I can follow up with Mr. Smiley on, but that's my understanding. Thank you.
I think that would be a good idea because if there are complaints in the municipality and, and a lot of complaints, I, I would hope that staff would bring it to council. That there's an issue with the certain types of, well, feeding animals or not even just animals, just any other type of repetitive complaint that, that staff get that we don't have a bylaw for, I would hope that, that information would come back to council. So we could possibly do something about it. Thank you.
So, oh, certainly.
I just regret that I don't have my notes to the, but the presentation that was given to us on the concerns and the residents did express her concerns at the podium here. So we have received that concern personally as counsel, and it was a legitimate concern to me. And I'm, I was hoping that we could at least have it reviewed and a report be brought to us on why we can't possibly assist in discouraging people from feeding ducks and geese and whatever, that they don't even leave the pond when they usually migrate is one of the concerns. That the raccoons and the other animals that are ground-fed skunks are encouraged and in your neighborhood that because there's so much flight with ground-feeding larger birds that you have to duck to your car so you don't get splashed or baptized with the burnt, burnt discharges for better lack of, it, it's a concern and, and I thought that we, we could support a report. And say, and if everyone says it's not a concern, well, then she'll have, other avenues will have to be investigated. Thank you.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. I think this resident did do a large due diligence, speaking to the chicken farmers in the area who expressed a large I guess discouragement and a large worry that the avian flu would be something that was carried to the chickens in our area. And that's, I mean, that's a big problem for food sustainability. I think that's something that we need to look at just for that angle is that's, that's a bigger problem that we need to be aware of. That's something that's going to affect that, which according to the experts on those farms, it is something they're worried about.
So normally we do this like two, we could do a circular all night, right? So, I mean, is the consensus of council that, you know, we get this report at some point, because it's not, there's no time frame on it, to look at adding this to our, our existing bylaw or that is, I'm suggesting that we just add it to our list of bylaws itself to review, let it percolate near the top. And one of the things that staff does when they're reviewing our bylaws is look to peers and neighbors to see, you know, what's, what's working for other people that's been refreshed more late, you know, as of late. Are we content to, you know, just kind of let them do their organic process, or we really want to kind of sic them on this one granular thing that I think we could all agree is largely unenforceable? And then have it come back with that singular recommendation to either build a new bylaw or add it to the existing one. I think I see, there's really only two options for us right now, so you know, we can, we can pass this the way it stands, and we're going to have that sort of singular response come back at some point. Or we can, you know, defeat this right now, not saying we disagree with the concept, but just trust staff that they've heard us and that when that list of bylaws is prepared for us to re-rank, I, I suspect we'll see this, this one up near the top, somewhere with property standards and clean lines and other things that are, you know, pretty dated and aged that clearly probably needs some top up too. You know, so I think in my mind, a no vote on this isn't that we discount this need, although I'm always hesitant to create bylaws around one or two problematic people in our community or behaviors. You know, it's not good policy. That needs to be something that's evidence-based, and we have a lot of. We don't seem to have that right now. You know, so in beating this around with you guys, I think I'm, I'm more inclined to vote this down right now and wait for council, the staff to come back with that list of bylaws that are, you know, woefully outdated, need to be reviewed. And then we can provide our input on the, on the subject of those changes as they get presented to us. So just for ma'am clerk.
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to clarify with Counselor McDonald. She had mentioned a small amendment, so I've redone the motion. And you wanted to, to have the wording with the exception of small bird feeders? Right?
I think it was spill proof or something. No spill feeders. Okay, I'll read the amended. Do we need a seconder for this amendment or is this housekeeping? Okay. All right, Counselor Proster, you content, you second the original one? Are you content with the wording change? Okay. Okay, so the amended motion on the floor with that little wording change is that staff review bylaw ninety-seven dash thirty-six, which is a bylaw to prohibit the feeding of Canada geese and seagulls within municipal parks and bring forward a staff report at a future regular council meeting to consider the prohibition of feeding all wild animals and birds, with the exception of small it says bird feeders within the town limits, but I think we all get it now after talking about it. Are you content with that wording change? Okay, so with that, then I'll call the question. Oh. Counselor Post.
I just want to make sure I'm still on track. We're voting this down to come back at a later. Is that?
It's an option. I'm suggesting that that's what a voting down means. It doesn't necessarily mean we disagree with the concept that I'm suggesting there's a different process that we can accomplish this by.
I think the other process makes more sense. So I, I'll vote it down, and for that reason, only not because I disagree.
That's fair. So is this like, anyone want to do a recorded vote? Is this really important or do, a show of hands is good here? So based on what we've all talked about, all those in favor? And those opposed? All right, that motion is defeated. But I'd like to thank my Ms. Doherty. And hopefully you heard our discussion around this, and this isn't the end of this right now. It's just, it's just a, a process. And hopefully you heard our discussion around this and this isn't the end of this right now. It's just um, it's just a a process. Okay, so what the public can't hear this, but um what the proponents of this uh changes in the audience and just is letting us know that this is under our jurisdiction. And and the fact that we haven't got records on complaint because there isn't um, you know, a bylaw offense to match the complaint against it. Right now, it's kind of like someone complaining that it rains too much in Midland. I I'm not belittling you. I'm just using it as an example. We wouldn't track that in our system because you know, it's, it's, it's not something we have any say or control over. Um, so that's why there isn't the metric. So this will come back, I am assuming at some point. I think uh the conversation is heard by staff and we were talking earlier tonight about a review of our bylaws at some point. There's quite a few to review and then it's almost a full time job. Just before we get on to the next motion, Counselor Ball.
I just want to make sure this is going to come back with an actual tracked complaint. Are we going to start tracking this as a complaint to bring forth so we have some information about it?
Mister Ferguson, I I'm assuming no, based on what I heard unless we have an ability to, now that we've talked about this, to put a new category and and track this.
Uh, through your worship, uh there 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 may be an opportunity through our CXO department if they're getting calls that we can track it and we can definitely have that conversation with the supervisor of bylaw to uh to track this type of information if uh if calls do come in. Um, however, if someone is calling us to wanting us to come out and investigate it, we don't have the bylaw to investigate it. So uh if it's in within one of our parks, then hundred percent that's within the bylaw, we can go out and enforce that. But if it's on a private property, uh we can take down the information. So that way we have, we do have that that data when we do come back to council. Uh, but it'll be important that we know uh if if we do get a complaint that the people have to give us an address of where it's occurring. So if we know it's within one area and it's not across the entire town, then uh then then we know maybe our our efforts need to be focused more in one area. So, thank you.
I think that's a very reasonable compromise. So um now, of course, no one's going to know about that fact until we let people know. So I'll do my part and perhaps rest of council can to your contacts. Let people know that this is something we're contemplating uh as part of the a review of the this feeding bylaw and to please log the complaints, knowing there won't be enforcement, but that'll allow us to collect some metrics and uh have make more evidence based approach when the time comes. And when you do log complaints on the town's website or by emailing service at midland.ca, feel free to attach photos. A picture will tell a thousand words and they are very valuable to our uh enforcement team because they can actually see it. So you can spend a paragraph describing it or send in a few pictures going, you know, this is the address these people feed whatever it is uh constantly, uh uh, you know, please log this for your consideration and their bylaw review. Something like that would, so Ms. Doherty, perhaps you could uh share that with um fellow proponents of this because we need that intel to make good decisions. So thank you very much for attending tonight and and humoring our lengthy debate on this matter. Okay, moving on, I've got twenty two point three. I have a motion here. Uh, council, you've all read it in your agenda. I need a second or to get on the floor. Got moved by Counselor East, so I have a second or. Counselor Ball. That the town of Midland send a letter to the federal and provincial governments requesting meaningful improvements to the current state of catch and release justice in the Ontario legal system. Police services across Ontario are exhausting precious time and resources, having to manage the repeated arrests of the same offenders, which in turn is impacting their morale and ultimately law abiding citizens who are paying the often significant financial and emotional toll of this broken system. And that this resolution be sent to other municipalities throughout Ontario for their endorsement and consideration. Counselor East.
Thank you, your worship. Oh. I'm nervous. I want to make sure that I say this properly. The current. Sorry. Okay, the the current justice system in Canada is failing every Canadian, whether it be a resident or our local police. Commissioners and police chiefs across Canada have been asking our government to reevaluate our justice system. What's happening is that violent offenders are getting released out on bail within a matter of hours or days after creating a violent offense. Without any sort of punishment or disciplinary action, the criminals will continue to grow and become more violent. We're not only putting every Canadian's household at risk of safety from crime, but we're also putting our police officers in danger as well. Police officers don't know what they're walking into anymore. They don't know if they're walking into a dispute where behind that door is a shotgun waiting for them. What I'm asking my fellow council and every council in Canada to do is to positively put a little bit of pressure on our governments, that being federal, our provincial government, Doug Ford, our local MPs, Adam Chambers, Jill Dunlop, to see if we can reevaluate our current Canadian justice system and the catch and release bail. If we can put pressure on this to change it, then with disciplinary actions, we might be able to make Canada a safer place. This is what I'm asking our council and every council across Canada to at least discuss, adopt and pursue.
All right, this is one of those uh emotional type uh motions and it's not uncommon to have them. I know I've lovely, you know, tabled a few in my time already and it's largely symbolic. We're not actually going to do anything specific about this other than add our voice to a growing chorus of people that feel that the uh federal justice system and the criminal code, which defines the parameters for release of someone accused with a crime. Um, and then the interpretation of that by the justice of the peace, which are provincially appointed judiciary. Uh, there's a lot of moving parts in this. It's a complex problem. And uh the long and short of it is any of you found yourself accused of a crime, whether you did it or not, and you were presented in front of a justice of the peace, the default is thou shalt release. Uh, because we just don't have the the jail system. And I'm glad we don't, uh like the US that are largely privately funded and it's warehousing people and that you will spend so much time in pre-trial dead time, they call it. So the the challenge is it's just so multifaceted. There's no easy fix. I spent, you know, twenty five years of my life working in this system. So I know it well. I've watched it fail and I've also watched it get it right. And I I will say that I've seen it get it right more often than not, but the failures are uh, you know, usually very inflammatory and as of late, we've seen you know, terrible hideous acts committed by people who are out on multiple releases. But honestly, counsel, there's, you know, we can do, well, we can vote for this. I mean, it's to vote against it, it feels like voting against puppies and rainbows. You know, of course, we're going to support this, um at least from my perspective. But I just want to temper the reality is that, you know, we're going to add our voice to this. I believe that the federal government is already committing to review this. There's a lot of pressure. And then, you know, if there's a flop in federal governments in the next couple of years, as you know, some people predict. I'm pretty sure it'll be a high priority for them as well with or without this motion. So um, thank you for bringing it up. It means we're talking about it. It means we're we're sensitive to it. It's entirely out of our hands as a lower tier municipality. Uh, we pay the bill for court security. Right? So that's about it. And prisoner transport and the cost of policing in our community. The justice system is completely out of our uh our purview. So tho- those are just my thoughts on this one. Um, you know, I have no problem supporting it, but I just want to put some parameters around it so that council realizes this is very big, out of our scope and out of our control. And uh much like my reference earlier, it'd be like, you know, wanting a motion for more sunny days in the summer at this point. Which I would vote for as well. And any other comments? I'll call the question. All those in favor. Any opposed? Counselor Ball seconded. Any opposed? Sorry, one opposed? Yeah, okay, that is carried. All right, next up we have item twenty three. We've got a bylaw or a motion moved by Ca- uh Deputy Mayor Cotton, seconded by that can't work, can't be himself. Counselor McDonald, if that's fine with you. That the following bylaws, bylaw twenty twenty three dash twenty one, to establish and regulate a fire department for the town of Midland and to repeal bylaw ninety five dash fifty six and bylaw twenty twenty three dash twenty two, regulate the sale and setting off of fireworks within town of Midland and to repeal bylaw two thousand and seven dash eight. Speaking of old bylaws, bylaw twenty twenty three dash fifty, appoint municipal law enforcement officers for the purpose of enforcing municipal bylaws in the town of Midland. It's our two new part time bylaw. And bylaw twenty twenty three dash fifty one, authorize the entering into a dispatch and information of and communication services agreement, city of Bari at be passed and enacted. Those are all and earlier tonight, all those in favor or any discussion around this? It's pretty cut and dry. All those in favor? Be imposed. It's carried. Next, uh motion moved by Counselor Pro, seconded by Counselor East, that a bylaw twenty twenty three dash fifty two, being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of regular council meeting with with closed session. Called in, I think this is the one we can't do because we're going back in a closed session. Yeah, all right. I caught that at the same time I detected the eyebrows of the clerk. Could feel them. Thank you. Alrighty, move by Counselor East, seconded by Counselor Prost. That council reconvene into closed session and further that this portion of the meeting be closed to the public pursuant to section two thirty nine of Municipal Act two thousand and one is indicated. To be personal matters about identifiable individual and two D labor relations or employee negotiations. This is where we're going to pick up our conversation on non-union staff labor relations. And subsection two B, personal matters about identifiable individual, committee of board appointments, which I'm excited about. And three B, an ongoing investigative investigation respecting the municipality, a local board or a municipally controlled corporation by the embudsman appointed under the Embudsman Act, an embudsman referred to in subsection two two three dash or two two three decimal one three subsection one of the act or the investigator referred to in subsection two thirty nine point two subsection one, and that's the embusman's report regarding the Huronia Airport Airport Joint Task Force. All those in favor? All right, folks online. Sorry, we're going to disconnect the recording and try and get this meeting done. Helps if I turn my mic on. Hello, welcome to everybody in TV land. Time will have not passed for you as it has for us. It is now ten thirty six PM. We've just come out of uh round two of our closed session. We had quite a hefty agenda. And I'm now just going to continue on as we uh go through the last bit of official business to close this meeting for the evening. Uh, I have a motion here moved by Counselor Pro, seconded by Counselor East, that bylaw twenty twenty three dash fifty two, being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of regular council meeting with closed session held September sixth, twenty twenty three be passed and enacted. All those in favor? That is carried. Next, stemming from our closed session, I have a motion moved by Counselor Ball, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cotton, that council receives information and confirm the directions as outlined in the verbal update and confidential presentation provided by the Director of Human Resources at the closed meeting session of council held September sixth, twenty twenty three with respects to the non-union staff labor relations. We've already had our discussion in camera. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Next, we have a mo- motion moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by uh Deputy Mayor Cotton, that further to the verbal report of the deputy clerk and confidential criteria based matrix provided at the closed meeting session of council held September sixth, twenty twenty three regarding appointments to various committees, council hearing confirms the following appointments for a term consistent with the term of council. For the active transportation committee, I'd like to welcome Daniel Downey. Frida Baldwin returns, Herb Vanderduell as well, Mark Hamlin, congratulations, Mark. Mary Lynn Broder and Howie Major um returns. And further that the administration be directed to amend and repost respective committee and boards with available appointments for this term. And I'd just like to add on that they'd like to thank all applicants um for our committees. And thank you for your your compassion and willingness to serve and we have room for everybody. All those in favor? That is carried. Uh, moved by Counselor Pro, seconded by Deputy Mayor, the council receives information, the confidential report prepared and provided by the embudsman and the council confirm its direction to the CIO. All those in favor? And that is carried. And last but not least, moved by Counselor Meredith, seconded by Counselor McDonald, at this regular meeting of council with closed session adjourned at ten thirty eight PM. All those in favor? And that is carried. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.